...come to order if I could have a roll call.
John Hutzco.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Paul Wilpon.
And if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on June 2nd and one on June 16th, and we have one set of minutes to approve tonight, and I think everyone was here except for Craig and John Cutler, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 17?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we abstain.
Two abstentions, great. Thank you. All right, and the first item on our agenda tonight is an adjourned public hearing for the Muse 89 units on Route 376. So do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Good evening. Good evening Chairwoman G, members of the board. My name is Ken Carney, I'm here tonight with my son and partner Sean Carney, Jeff Cantamo and Eric Schwobum from Inside Engineering, our architects AJ Capola from Capola Associates, and our partners, Abilities First, represented by Dr. Fox and Ellen Griffith.
As we get started here, I just want to make sure we have the elevations for the buildings because I think you have your ARB approval now, so our public hearing is part of that, so we want to make sure that's facing the audience, and if we're able to put them up on the screen, that would be great, too.
Yeah. Either way, well.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just want to make sure we get...
Sure, I understand.
Thank you.
The Muse at Hopewell Junction consists of 88 rental units and one non-rent bearing super unit. There's 36 one-bedrooms, 38 two-bedrooms, 14 three-bedrooms. Twenty-two of the units are set aside for persons with developmental disabilities, and they will be, those units will be controlled by Abilities First, our partner. In addition to renting the apartments, onsite services will be provided for those special needs tenants. Abilities First will have an office onsite. In addition, we have an onsite management office for one of our employees. We do all of our own management, and we will have a superintendent who lives onsite as well, who is our eyes and ears 24/7. Since our last appearance here, there's been a couple of changes to the site plan, so I'm going to introduce Jeff Cantamo to talk about that, and then AJ Capola can talk a little bit about his progress with the Architectural Review Board. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Jeff Cantelmo from Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC. At the last meeting, there were several comments the board made that we thought would be good to advance the plans and provide some additional detail, and in that, we did a few things. Number one, we relayed out our entry drive to the current preferred location. If you recall, the last time, we were lined up here with the Sutherley Town Hall entrance, and now we line up with what the town and the DOT and our office discussed in terms of an alternative that everyone thinks would work the best, so that's been relocated. The second thing is, we've expanded our landscaping plan by providing the details of the type, sizes, et cetera, of the plantings. Third of all, we've provided the detail of our lighting plan in terms of fixture types, foot candles, et cetera. And fourth, we provided the location of our project sign, which will be just outside of the right-of-way on our property, and provided a detail that'll have two stone columns with a low sign identifying the project in that.
And Jeff, I'm sorry, just point out where those will be again?
The sign will be right here. The right-of-way line is this heavy black line, there's a very wide right-of-way to Route 376, and so we have to sight it on our property, so it'll be just in off the entrance.
Give me a rough idea of the number of feet from the 376, if you can.
Yeah, I believe this distance here to be almost 150 feet.
150, okay.
And, you know, we have a cut coming in, you know, there's a high point in our driveway right up here, so there is some grading, this light green represents about where our disturbance will be to get the grading in and get the sightlines to work. So the sign actually will be in quite a distance compared to what you're used to, but again, the DOT doesn't really require us to do that without special provisions, which we'd rather not get into.
Okay.
Would that, I'll let AJ bring you up to date on the ARB project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Since our last meeting, we've met with the ARB two additional times, those were both during the last week, and we want to thank the Architectural Review Board for making themselves available to us so that we could obtain their approval. So we did obtain their approval yesterday, and we just received that in writing today, which I have in my hand. And basically, again, they made a number of design enhancements and suggestions, which we've now incorporated into our drawings. Just a real quick review, in the, there's two, there's one double-loaded corridor building, that's the building on the top, that's the one-bedroom building. We enhanced the entrance there, we broke the roof line before there was one continuous roof, we've now broken that roof line, you can see that creates a shadow line. We added cupolas to the top, enhanced the entrance, the first-floor entrance there in that center portion, adding more glass, bringing the, that portion of the building out a little bit further, so that they were, they really wanted that portion to read like the entrance, that you would see that from a distance, and oh, there's the entrance, which definitely improved the look of the whole building. So those types of enhancements were also made on the other garden-style apartment building, I've forgotten which number that is. And then there's the four townhouse buildings, they also have the cupolas, that's, the townhouse rendering is the lower rendering here. We also played with the windows on that, and we also changed the ridge line slightly on that. So I believe we've made a number of enhancements. It is kind of fundamentally the same type of look that we presented here last month, so you probably wouldn't even know the difference unless I listed those things for you, but we definitely want to thank the board for their input, and we believe we have a great-looking project.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board, and this is the first time we're seeing the updated drawings, they do look very similar, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other changes with the project, anybody? Any other changes with the project itself? Okay. Brendan, I saw the traffic studies completed now, you want to just walk us quickly through, I think you ended up with A and B ratings on the intersections, and I also want to just get a sense of where the Town Hall and the Fire Department entrances will be as they relate to this, because I think there, actually, we can put the plan back up for a second, as they relate to this, because I think there was some comment from the Fire Advisory Board that they were concerned that the entrance not be directly across from their driveway, so I think that's been fixed or changed, but I want to make sure.
Their driveway now is...
Christian, lift the mic.
Their driveway has been shifted, shifted to the south. Last time we were here, it was opposite the southern Town Hall entrance and the firehouse entrance, so they've shifted that to the south, and on their plan, they'll show a connection to the Town Hall parking lot further to the north. And, you know, one other thing we're going to look for is that the access between the parking lot that serves the firehouse, which helps with the access through to the firehouse, and also when they have some off-peak social events at the firehouse, that parking lot is used. But we'd like to put some "do not enter" signs from the Town Hall parking lot leading into there, so that everyone would be forced to go out the new entrance to the Town Hall.
Okay.
And you can see right there is the proposed new entrance into the Town Hall parking lot.
That's the new entrance, the existing Sutherley entrance to the Town Hall, that's going to become restricted?
It's going to be, it's not going to be restricted, it's still going to be in and out, but it's just going to be for the firehouse, the firehouse lot, and the access between that lot and the Town Hall lot, that would be restricted in terms of, you could pass through there, but...
But a "do not enter" sign or something?
A "do not enter" sign, so you wouldn't come back out and exit here.
Okay.
And then, you know, there's, I think, better than 250 feet of distance between their proposed driveway and a relocated Town Hall entrance, which is, which is an ample enough distance so that those two driveways wouldn't interfere with each other, because they will see some overlap in the peaks when the Town Hall exits in the PM, and probably the morning peak would be pretty much offset, though, because you'll see the peak at the, from this development before you'll see the peak at the Town Hall.
Okay, and then for the, for the Fire Department entrances, I'm assuming they're, we're not expecting any conflict?
No, no. I mean, they're left on change, I mean, obviously, there's not too much activity to the firehouse, and obviously, when there is activity, it's critical, there won't be any, you know, direct conflict with that, and, you know, obviously, anyone that's on the road or exiting here is going to have to abide by letting the firehouse access to be open.
Okay.
And then, as you indicated, I mean, the, there's the traffic that's generated from here, the peak hour traffic in the morning is approximately 45 cars that this is going to develop, and in the PM, it's 60, 63 cars, but the level of service at the driveway, exiting the driveway, is actually a Level Service B, so a very high level of service, and then the level of service actually entering into the driveway is Level Service A, so it's pretty much, it demonstrates that it doesn't really inhibit the traffic that's on 376.
Okay.
We did also look at the intersection of 376 and 82 to the north, and 376 and 52 to the south. We have identified, and even in previous applications and studies, we have identified some timing issues with the signal at 376 and 52, and we're in communication with the DOT to try to get them to rectify that now, not even in lieu of this project, but if we can fix that, then, you know, this project isn't going to have an impact on the level of service of that intersection.
Okay. Anything else with the traffic study itself that we should talk about?
Just the only other, you know, traffic-related comments, you know, the pedestrian accommodation that's being shown is the sidewalk coming out to 376 and their proposed bus shelter. You know, we've had, we've had some communication with the DOT about, you know, the potential for pedestrians crossing 376. You know, their initial indication is that, you know, they don't, they don't, you know, they're not too much in favor of putting mid-block crosswalks, like marked crosswalks, and they absolutely don't like to put crosswalks right at an intersection that doesn't have control, so, you know, in a non-signalized intersection, you generally wouldn't put a crosswalk. People can legally cross there, but the reason why is they can't, they can't sign them well, and you have cars turning, and sometimes it leads, it leads to a false sense of security if there's a crosswalk right at an intersection that's not signalized. But we are still having some communication and coordination with the DOT to see if there's any enhancements that they'll recommend for, because we will see, you know, some pedestrian passage from this development to the opposite side of 376 and, you know, pedestrian generators of the Town Hall and the library and the hamlet. There are, 376 does have, you know, paved, paved shoulders that vary in width, but in all cases, they're, you know, they're, at least from here up to the hamlet, they're four-foot or greater, and, you know, although it's not ideal entirely, it is, it is considered to be an accommodation for pedestrians and bicyclists to use the, use the dedicated shoulder area outside the white line.
Okay, so we're still following up with the DOT, and we'll find out whether we can have a crosswalk?
Right.
If we were going to do that, would it be at the entrance to this site, or would it be at the proposed entrance to the new entrance to the Town Hall?
Well, actually, that's, that's sort of, you know, therein lies the problem. They, they don't like to put crosswalks at intersections that are not signalized.
I heard you, but I'm just trying, I mean, if we're going and saying we're trying to get a crosswalk anyway, where are we asking for it, or where does it make sense?
Well, I think, I think right now, what we're doing is asking for a crosswalk at the driveway, or any other enhancement or accommodation for pedestrians at that, at that driveway location, at the proposed driveway location.
So then if a pedestrian crossed there, we would just, they're hitting a grassy median on the other side to get into either the...
They're, yeah, they're going to hit the shoulder of 376 and utilize the shoulder, I mean, obviously, once they get into the Town Hall property, they could, they could navigate through the parking lot, and even to the backside of the Town Hall and the library and up through the park, but that, you know, that's, that's the route until...
Wouldn't it make more sense to put that on the north side of the proposed new entrance? And maybe consider some sidewalk...
Yeah, well, I think that's what we're talking right here, right? Or, or you're saying up in this area?
I'm saying up there, right. Put some sidewalk, that way you don't have to cross multiple ingressy crests places if you go to the north side. If you put sidewalking on the west side, and then cross just north of the new intersection, then pedestrians don't have to cross driveways.
Right, and I think, I mean, we have, we have had that discussion, and, you know, that's, that's one of the things that's under consideration, you know, I mean, as the future development of this, you know, the further development or complete development of this canon parcel, you know, the, the hope is that this, this would come back around and circle back around to the northern, the northern entrance into the Town Hall, and then that, you know, the pedestrian access could come out at that location.
Yeah.
So, you know, if, but there is certainly some potential to put pedestrian facilities along 376 for some distance.
Brendan, how far is the applicant going to put sidewalks now?
Right now, if I understand the application correctly, the sidewalk is only being proposed right now to come out of 376.
In the shoulder?
With the bus stop, right there.
To the bus stop, right at the intersection, yeah, right at their, their juncture. And then the other couple of traffic-related issues, we did review their, their truck-turning diagrams, we asked for a couple of enhancements of that, just the access out onto 376, and then the, you know, these are some proposed emergency access at the rear and up an extension of the driveway in the front. We'd like to see the circulation of the emergency vehicles through there, just to make sure that the geometry, and we've asked that the, the surface of those access roads be looked at and made sure that they're adequate for, for emergency vehicles.
And the FAB comments, it's like it's, it needs to be at least 12 feet wide and paved to support the weight of the...
Okay, yeah, I haven't actually seen the FAB comment, so, but we'll look at that also.
We have them tonight, I'm sorry, I thought we got one into everybody's. It just says the emergency access road needs to be at least 12 feet wide and paved in order to support the weight of fire apparatus. The interior circulation, excuse me, Brendan, I saw that we had, one of the, one of the map layers had the truck turns, but is it the right apparatus, and is it, is the interior of this site laid out to accommodate?
Yeah, I think the only, the only, the only comment we had with regard to that is that the, and we were a little bit unclear when we looked at the plan, there was a detail for some mountable curving, and we wanted to know if some of that mountable curving was going to be on the interior island, so that if, if in case there was an emergency or emergency vehicle needed to get past, you know, vehicles that were already there in the access road, that, you know, they might be able to utilize that center green area if it was constructed with a mountable curve, you know, in the areas where there's not parking, obviously, but...
Okay.
I don't know if that was the proposal or not, Jeff, I don't know if that's, it is. Okay. But, yeah, the...
But the roads themselves meet the required radius for the large truck, and...
Yes, and the circulation on the interior of the site was sufficient.
And I'm assuming if it meets the requirement for the large fire truck, it meets moving van type, moving truck type?
Yeah, they actually showed a layout for a WV40 also.
Okay.
So that's covered, too.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Anything else?
That was all the comments that I had.
Okay. Nina, I know Michelle couldn't be here tonight, but if we can slide the mic over to you, maybe you can just give us a quick update on where we are with the EAF?
Sure. Just for the board members, I'm Nina Peake, I'm filling in for Michelle Robbins this evening.
Move the mic closer.
Thanks. The EAF Part III is substantially complete, there's a couple of housekeeping items that are remaining, some correspondence that the town is still awaiting. There's a letter from OPRHP regarding, no effect, Michelle has a verbal from OPRHP, but she's just waiting for correspondence confirmation. The school analysis has been completed, it's been forwarded to the school district, Michelle has coordinated directly with the school superintendent and the school district attorney, provided them with the analysis and some additional information that they requested. They've spoken several times, the school district has everything that they need, the site plans have been shared with the folks that do the bus routing, and so the town is just awaiting a letter back from the school district with their, with their comment.
Okay.
Sorry. That's going to be a point that we really, how do we ensure we have something from it? Is there any way to send a letter saying, "Look, if we don't hear from you, we'll have to assume there is no issue"?
Yeah, well, basically, in the secret process, when you establish yourselves a lead agency, even though you're not required to, you always add, as an interested party, the school district, whichever school district it's in. Based on that, they get a full set of the plans months ago, early on in the process. Then, as Nina has indicated, Michelle has had back-and-forth dialogue, they did send a letter asking some questions about the acreage of the property, things like that, about the covenant restriction that would be placed on the property, and some other information which Michelle has provided to them. She also gave them a children account based on a formula that's utilized by school districts, they have that. The last discussion I had with their attorney was about two weeks ago, and I know Michelle closed the loop with them on information a day or two later. As an interested agency, they have no approval authority in the project, so if they respond, they respond, if they don't, there's no obligation on the board's part to await that response. It's unlike the DOT, DEC, Army Corps, groups like that, that have actual approval authority. That's the way the state law is structured, and that's the process.
I understand that.
But they have all the information that they need to render any comments they wish.
I understand that, and again, you know, you pointed out that we always do that, but in this case, given everything that's going on, it would be particularly nice to get a response.
Well, they were aware that there was a public hearing this evening, and they, you know, are aware that the, the time is, is on before the board as far as receiving any comments.
Yeah, I mean, Mike, I don't want it to seem like we haven't repeatedly been in contact, but we've done...
No, I know that, but I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, well, I just, I would suspect that, one, they're a little, little distracted by some of their own proceedings, but by the same token, just saying, "Look, if we don't hear from you, we're going to assume that it's okay", because generally, we get some kind of response, but they seem a little more reticent than less.
But that's the process that, when Hopewell Glen was going through a process, 280 homes, it was forwarded to the school district, I don't know whether they commented or not, but oftentimes, they don't, it's not that they do on a regular basis, so, but they always are provided with the information. In this case, they did...
I'm the liaison to the school district.
And you know that for well, and in this case, they even inquired more, for more information than they usually do, and it was provided to them.
And provided some time ago?
Yes.
Wasn't provided just yesterday or anything like that?
Well, beyond that, I think, you know, you're just waiting for another letter from the Fire Board of Commissioners, you have the Fire Advisory Board letter, and a letter from the Police Department, so other than that, you should be receiving the completed Part III of the EAF next week.
Okay. Do you anticipate that any of the items that we're waiting on would change the plan?
No, I do not.
Okay. And I had notes here on the wetland determination, confirmation of Army Corps of Engineers requirements, I'm sorry if you mentioned Army Corps already, where are we with the wetlands?
I did not mention that. I have in my notes, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but that a JD is not required as part of this project, there will be no wetland, direct wetland disturbance as a result of the proposed development, there may be, there will be some adjacent wetland development as a result of some utility work that's needed, but in terms of an Army Corps engineer, Army Corps wetlands, there is, to my knowledge, no Army Corps regulated wetlands on the proposed project site, and as a result, a JD is not required. Is that correct?
That is correct. Nita's correct, we do, in the site proper, there are no regulated wetlands, along the back of the parcel, Brendan, you used up all my juice, what's up with that? Along what would be the west side, north's up on this, there is a DEC wetland, as Nita pointed out, we do not have any direct wetland impact, we do have some adjacent area impact, which would require us to get a freshwater wetland permit from the New York State DEC.
Is that mostly for the force main?
Actually, the force main, I think, is primarily outside of the buffer, there are a couple stormwater discharges because of elevation that need to go out. That wetland has been delineated by the town's consultant, and it has been reviewed by the DEC, and we are preparing that application, which, again, would only be some minor disturbance within the wetland adjacent area and not within the wetland, and there are no Army Corps permits required or impacts.
Okay. Anything else we're waiting on for the completion of the EAF, and nothing that would change the site plan itself at this point?
That I know of, no.
Okay. Christian, Engineering, anything we need to talk about?
At this point, from our standpoint, the majority of our comments, that back-and-forth with the applicant is really going to be limited to hammering out the details of the project, the small technical details, you know, that's going to be the extent of the back-and-forth that we have in any comments, but the few, the few items that we'll bring up include, we'll most likely ask them to beef up their pavement structure detail, in particular, the portion of the driveway that's going to end up becoming the loop road. We'll have to work through that with Scott, but I know we have a couple of things in mind, possibly beefing it up to be similar to what a minor road, what the town would require for a minor road construction, and then also the parking area, beefing that up a little bit, that was one thing. The other item we wanted to bring up tonight was, I believe there's a stormwater practice proposed in the New York State DOT right-of-way.
Right.
So I'm not sure how that would work with the stormwater agreement, I would think that the DOT would be involved. I think that we should ask for them to demonstrate some sort of approval, some, whether it's a conceptual approval from the DOT, saying that they're aware of it and that they would approve something like that. I don't think I, we've seen something proposed before in the DOT right-of-way, so that's just one item we wanted to raise, so we can work with Scott and Tom as well, the applicant, to figure that out.
Okay.
And the last thing really was the water system. We are asking the applicant to provide additional information to confirm that they have adequate capacity and pressure for what they're proposing. At this point, there's no, nothing is telling that they, they won't have that capacity or pressure, we are just asking them to, you know, provide the additional details that they normally would, just to confirm that all the capacity that we believe is there is there, and just kind of...
And that's both for normal consumption and for fire flow or the sprinkler systems, or, okay, whatever the requirement is for that?
Yeah, so, yeah, we're going back and forth with them, and based on the sprinkler systems that they're proposing and the fire flow, they're going to lay it all out and compare it to what is existing, what's shown as the existing capacity of the system based on the original designer and original engineers' report, and possibly doing some additional, some pressure testing, hydrant flushing and stuff like that, so...
Okay. And the, the plan is still to connect to the water line that's on this side of 376 behind the Town Hall here?
Um, yes.
Is that, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
That was really it from us.
Okay.
Again, it was, aside from those three, it's really the water system is the only really open issue, the other thing's going to be resolved, you know, between our office and the applicant, so...
Okay. I heard you say DOT and stormwater, Brendan, is that something that needs to be part of the discussions you're having when we talk about the crosswalk, if there's something like that we need to do in the right-of-way?
Well, they're still going to have a requirement for having a, for getting a highway work permit, so any work that's done inside the highway boundary is going to be...
So you're aware that there may be some stormwater...
Actually, I wasn't aware of that, but I am now, and...
Okay. Okay.
You know, I think any future discussions will have the DOT, you know, that can be incorporated into our conversation also. If there's gonna be, I mean, there's the highway work permit to do the work within the highway boundary. If they're actually gonna have a facility in the highway boundary, then they're generally gonna be required to pursue a use-in-occupancy permit to have that facility within the boundary.
Jeff, can you just come on up for a second? Let's just, I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, as far as what you're proposing and what's needed.
Yeah, we're fully aware that, number one, all the work within the DOT right-of-way requires their approval and a permit, and, as Brendan said, under a highway work permit. So that would basically include the new entrance to the town hall property, our new entrance, and accommodation for the continuance of some stormwater that the DOT has in that area. There's actually a pipe that makes its way under the driveway to the wastewater treatment plant. And then, as I said earlier, we have a high point at our site right here. Our entire site drains back this way, but this little bit of entry drive here does drain out into 376 in order to be responsible to other state requirements for stormwater. As Christian properly pointed out, we have a small stormwater practice in the form of a water quality swale, which will work with the piping that we're gonna be working in that area. And all of those components will be looked at as part of a single permit with the DOT, and we fully understand that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just one thing to make you aware of. In our conversations with the DOT, they did, they do recognize that they have an excessive amount of right-of-way in this area, you know, more than they would normally have along. Historically, they're not quite sure why they own so much right-of-way in this area, 376. So some of these things needing to be located in there right-of-way, I think they're gonna, they have understanding for that, because they own a big swath of land here.
Would it be typical, though, that then they would ask for it to be pushed further away from the road to where a normal right-of-way might have ended, or it just ends up anywhere where it's most useful?
You know, I think that because they have so much right-of-way, that right-of-way line is gonna end up being, you know, behind potentially some of the facilities for their development, that's all.
Okay. There's no suggestion that they would give some of it back?
You know, they do that. I mean, they do that.
I'm not asking you to think that's a-
On occasion, but, you know, that's another conversation and, you know, another process. But, yeah, sometimes they do sell, they sell back the excess land if they have no need for it. But the one thing in this case, there's a creek crossing and a bridge to the south, so they're not always, you know, they'd be reluctant to give a property that approaches any kind of water crossing, because they might need it for somewhere in the future for some shifting of traffic or the roads.
Okay. Is that, but you're not anticipating that that's gonna prevent, a potential future need shouldn't prevent current stormwater drainage from being put where it needs to be?
No.
Okay. All right. Anything else we should cover before we open for public comment? Any other questions or comments from board members?
The litigation.
Sure.
We're gonna update on the litigation. Update on the litigation.
The litigation is resolved with the stipulation of settlement. And part of the stipulation of settlement is that we'll timely process a site plan approval, which we're working on.
Okay.
As you, I mean, if you want, everybody recalls that the town board-
Yep, no, I just-
-turned down an application at a previous site. The town was sued, both to review that, as well as, under federal civil rights law, Americans with Disability Act and Fair Housing Act. And in order to resolve those claims, the proposal was made to develop the site across the street. If this process goes through, then those claims will be discontinued.
And if not, it returns to-
If not, then the applicant's lawsuit that's pending in the state Supreme Court against Joe's Mother's Road corner would resume at that point. The town would have to put in its opposition to their papers, and it would go, it's assigned to Judge Barbers and Belly, and she will process the decision.
Thank you.
Tom, was there any look at corridor improvement type fund, like we're doing on Route 52?
Corridor improvement here on 376?
Yeah, for this area.
Well, as we know, the town owns the parcel across the street. The concept, two, three years ago, was that there would be the development of a park in the front. It's 142 acres, I believe. Over 100 will be permanently conserved, the wetlands and floodplains, and all the land that goes up to Bowel Road and all the surrounding areas will be part of a conservation parcel. And then the middle section of the 376 site would be utilized for open space parkland at the current time. The town's also developing a well field. We've been very lucky to find a rather large source of drinkable water. On that site, our application to DEC for a water supply permit is in, and that source of water will provide supplemental water to the existing town water districts, the Hopewell Hanlet District, Fishkill Plains, Revere Park, Redview, as well as the Hopewell Glen District. And EPA has indicated that if they get their final approval to proceed with the remediation of the EPA Superfund Site and Ryan Drive, they will also be making a connection to the site. So that's, if that's an improvement in the corridor, it certainly is gonna be very beneficial to the public water supply and the redundancy for it, so.
Any questions or comments? Okay, what we'd like to do now is open up for public comment. So what we'll do is we have our sign-up sheet on the corner of the table, right over here to my left. I can't tell my right from my left sometimes, to my left. Anyone who'd like to speak, I just ask that you come on up and sign in for us. We'll call you up in the order that you sign in, and if you're the first person that signs up, you can go right to the podium. And we'll just take a moment to give everyone a chance to sign in. Did anyone else wanna sign up? Okay, great.
Do you wanna go first? Do you wanna go first?
Sure. Good morning, good evening, board members. My name is Bill Quinn. We met before. I'm an MSW social worker and a resident of Hopewell Junction for, since 1998. I'm very happy that this is, seems to be moving forward, because I come here as the voice of people with disabilities in Dr. Scott County, where it's sorely needed, the housing, the transportation. Without it in an area like this, someone like me can barely get out of the house. The independence that it'll afford me, 'cause I'm applying, will be very great. Like I said before, I'm 38 years old, still living with my mom, because the lack of the housing is so terrible. So I'm really, you know, I'd be really grateful if this becomes a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Slowshower. I had spoken out several times when the project was on Joe's Mother's Road. My comments then was, I didn't think it was an appropriate location. I was also in favor of moving the project across the street. I'm still in favor of the project across the street at this point. I have not really seen anything that would, at this point, change my mind. But I do have some questions and concerns, and I just would like to get some clarification on a few things, if that's possible.
Of course.
First thing is, since we did move across the street and we did add units, I was just wondering if Mr. Carney had considered, you know, possibly making some units available to returning veterans, you know, that were fighting overseas. I think that really would've made this project even more attractive and been in a situation that would've filled another need within this community. So I don't know if that was something that was considered. I don't know if there's any restrictions due to his funding and the way he's put his project together, but if that was possible, I would just, that would've, if that was taken into consideration, that would've been great for the community. I just wanna move over to some traffic concerns. I guess Brendan could answer it. Was anything taken into consideration based on the restrictive area on this side that you've mentioned with regards to summer camp? Because summer camp directs traffic for pickup to drive around. So if this portion is going to be restricted, was anything into consideration during the summer hours for that traffic at 2:00, 2:30, when all the cars are lining up on 376 to get in to go around town hall?
And I'm sorry, just help me orient myself, 'cause I'm not familiar with summer camp. So are you using the, you're directed to Southbound entrance right now?
Well, summer camp, you pull in on pickup. Drop-off, you go in through the rec center.
Okay.
They close that off.
Okay.
And the cars are directed to come here, behind the building, around, and we line up, going down the back road-
Okay. So do you come in by the library and come around, or do you come in by the firehouse?
Well, if you're coming this way, you're gonna come in by the library-
So either-
But sometimes they will direct you around. If you're coming up from 82, you're coming in this way.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's just July and August.
Well, I think, too, we should reflect that there was a time, as the camp activities grew, the traffic issue became a concern way before this year. And what happened over the years is more implementation of a traffic control plan has occurred by the town. And as you indicated, now the cars go down this way and come in the town hall on this side.
Right.
If you can see, proposed is another entrance to the town hall, which would probably facilitate those cars getting off. And the reason they come on that side of the building is so that the line is behind the town hall.
I'm just saying, in terms of coordinate, I mean, again, it's coordinating with summer camp.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I think, 'cause that's their-
And he was made aware of that.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a couple things to point out. You know, the peak traffic, you know, it will be offset from the peak traffic that we anticipate from this development through the camp. And actually, some of the rationale that was employed in terms of moving the driveway further to the south and separating it from the town hall driveway is exactly that, so that it didn't interfere with the use of the town hall driveway.
Yeah, I'm just pointing it out, is, 'cause I haven't heard it mentioned at all, and although it's just a couple of months out of the year, I mean, you're talking about a lot of, you know, it's a lot of traffic from 2:00 to 3:00-
Right.
Although it's not a real busy time in town, but it still could cause some congestion.
Sure.
And especially if this part is restricted over here and you can't theoretically pull in, so just the logistics.
You would still, just to make sure that you understand the plan, too, you would still be able to pull into the town hall parking lot. It would just be a little bit further to the right.
Okay.
The entrance just is being moved up a little bit closer to directly-
That's fine. I'm just saying, the way the kids, when they close off the parking lot, they direct us all the way back and around, so I just, just some coordination-
I would anticipate that would remain the same.
Yeah, right.
That wouldn't change.
That's-
And we also believe that the new driveway that's being proposed for the town hall actually has a better alignment with the parking lot and the access to the town hall, where you don't have to, where you have a better approach to line yourself up to enter and exit, and enter from 376.
Okay. Let's say, just again, just bring it up for discussion purposes, to make sure it's taken care of. I just wanna move on, 'cause we brought up the school district, so Tom must have always read my mind when I'm here and he's here with the school district, so he probably knew I was gonna talk about it. So he kinda beat me to the punch a little bit, and I always appreciate Tom's input. I actually received an email from the superintendent as a follow-up to tonight's meeting. He was working on a response, and I had been, between him and the business manager, telling them we had a public hearing tonight, and this information, the planning board, as well as the developer, has been waiting on. I received an email from him that it's being worked on. There was a deadline date. He missed the deadline date. I actually, you know, foiled that information from him to receive a copy. I was hoping that you would've had it already, but obviously, that's not the case. Some of the issues which Tom brought up, which obviously were being addressed, and I guess Michelle was talking to the superintendent as well, but maybe you have some information for bus pickup. Now, it's a private road, so obviously, there's no access into the complex to pick up the kids, so that we have the bus shelter outside. So I'm not sure what is being proposed with the bus shelter. Is there going to be a bus shelter on both sides of 376? Because, again, bus runs are being factored in for directions of schools. You have Gayhead is down the road here, if you're gonna go to John Jay, but if some kids are going to Van Wyck, it's the opposite direction. So logistically, how are those kids going to be picked up on 376? Some may have to be on one side of the road for pickup, and others may be on the other side. I don't know what the logistics were.
We would expect the children not to cross 376 unless or until a school bus has stopped and all traffic on the road has stopped to accommodate that.
Right, so-
I think it's similar to what Wildflower does.
Yeah, I would want the bus shelter to remain on the side of the road where the development is, that we don't have kids crossing.
Well, I just didn't know if there would dual, you know, if there were gonna be dual bus on both sides, depending on traffic. What about just for the residents as well, for the complex? If they wanted to go into the village or head off in the other direction, and we only have a bus coming, is there gonna be a bus stop near the entrance? No, a regular bus?
We can't, we'll ask the applicant to give us an update. They were talking with the Loop system to see whether there could be public bus there. We'll ask for an update on that.
Okay, so we're not sure. Because I think talking to transportation is an important thing. And I know that you had sent over requests, and I'm hoping that, once I follow up with another email first thing tomorrow morning, that you get this information, because listening to Tom's explanation, that you can make a decision without getting all of this information is a little concerning to me. And Mr. O'Brien, you know, brought up an excellent point. We do have a budget vote and an election going on today, and there was a vote to redistrict and re-grade configuration, and 610 kids were moved. So if we're gonna have 30 new students, or 20 new students, or 50 new students, based on this new complex, you know, where are those kids going to go? Are they all gonna be at Gayhead? Because with the-
Well, that would be K through 12.
Well, it's K through, it's K through six, through the new grade configuration.
I'm just saying, the 20 students were all ages.
Well, right, we don't know. I mean, we could have 20 kids going to Gayhead, but based on what has been done right now, there's no room for those 20 children at Gayhead or Fishkill Plains. So they may be part of the district, but they may be going to Myers, and they may be going to Vassar. So if he's marketing his properties, excuse me, his property, and he's putting Wappingshire Central School District, and people drive, "Oh, Gayhead, oh, that school is right down the block. This is great." There's no guarantee that those children are gonna be there. Now, that's not, you know, an issue for Mr. Carney, but that is information that I think everyone should be made aware of, as to what's going on. So, again, I will do my part as someone who's very vocal within the school district and a parent that, you know, is very involved, to try to help you get this information, 'cause I think it's very important, because it leads me to my next topic, which was, had you received any confirmation from Mr. Carrion? And obviously, that is not the case. So we don't truly know how many kids he can accommodate. And that's a big question, based on what's transpired in the community here in the last few months. I just, I-
I just wanna reiterate for our record that we didn't reach out to the school district just in the last couple of days. We reached out to them a very long time ago, months ago. So I don't want there to be a perception that because there was an event tonight with the school district vote and that sort of thing, that they didn't have time to respond.
There's no-
We've done our best to try to get the response back from them.
Since the project, when it was on the other road, started, I have also been an advocate for the superintendent to have better communication in order to help facilitate these situations. So I understand that.
We appreciate that. I mean, we want that information, but we also, you know, it's not, it's something that, as a process for us, it's not something we can wait for when we've already given- given more than sufficient time for the response. And I get, I totally get what you're saying.
I realize that. But that, I mean, again, I don't want to go too much off-topic, but that's kind of the breakdown of the communication between the towns and the school district, which is causing, you know, an uproar with certain members of the community. And it is what it is.
And very respectfully, this board has always reached out to school districts when appropriate, when we're looking at plans that may generate underage children.
And I appreciate that, and it leads me to my next quick segue with regards to this particular project, when it was originally on Joe's Mother's Road. Because I tried to get some additional information to get a better understanding of what the process is, and I do have a copy of an email that you participated in, Ms. G., and Mr. O'Brien, when this project was on the, located, when it was the homestead at Hopewell. And it just concerns me a little bit, and maybe you can give me a better understanding of the process. But it's an email that's dated January 11th, 2012, where there was a conference call with the then superintendent, and both of you participated, and Mr. O'Brien had generated it based on a conference call, that the school district doesn't disagree with the projections of the number of students the complex will generate while schools, while schools in total are not a capacity, other schools within the area are, and additional students would be accommodated by shifting the students among the other schools. Does anyone disagree? Now, what stands out with me is that there's, and I'm not blaming the board, this is, to me, it's just a lack of communication, I believe, on both sides between the district and the planning board, is that there is no numbers here. You're having an, you're confirming an email that it's okay to do this. There's no numbers here. There's nothing provided in the documents that says it's 50 students, 30 students, or 10 students. So-
Not in the email.
Not in the email, and not in any documents that I foiled.
Not in the email. I would be really clear. We always provide that.
That's correct. Those are my notes.
Exactly. There's a memo and an email. And I'm not, I'm just trying to get a better understanding. I'm not-
Well, it seems like-
I apologize, I don't, I'm not. I just want to get an understanding as to the process-
Well, maybe we should talk about the process.
For that, if we could.
There are generally accepted standards as to how the number of students generated by development of any kind, single-family homes, apartments, et cetera, are calculated. It's one that I believe the Planners Association of America-
Yeah, Rutgers.
-school districts.
Yeah, they're very popular.
Correct. And so, that information can be put together based on the plans that are submitted. In this particular application at this juncture, those calculations were actually done by the town planning consultant and given to the school district.
Okay.
In 99.9% of the time, the school district does its own calculation based on the information provided months ago at the beginning of every project when you start the CEQA process. And so, I, I don't think it's, it may be that everyone doesn't understand the custom and practice and the style, but the information's given, the tools are there, and if they reached out to us and asked us to do all the calculations, I'm sure we would. In this particular application, we did that because we were aware of the heightened sensitivity.
Right. Well, I just, again, I'm, and if you don't mind, if I could reach out to you after, I didn't even know you were the liaison, I would, if it's okay, I'd love to schedule some time. Just, I just want to get a better-
No, that's fine. But just to be clear, what we're talking about there-
Clearing.
There was, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
There was a table that we were talking about.
Okay.
There was a matter of record associated with the project.
Okay.
That's filed in the Town Hall, and it's part of the official documents, and I was just asking if they concurred with those numbers.
Okay. Because I had foiled that, and that was not provided to me from here, from the planning board. I was just got, received copies of an email and a memo with nothing, so that's just my confusion there. I did not, I did not get that. And I just went back on projects over the last 15 years, and look, the school board fills out half of the request and leaves the other half blank. So, I'm just trying to get a better understanding from the board and from the, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get everybody to work together to make these, this process a lot easier moving forward. And I know I'm getting off-topic, so I want to just get back to the project.
No, it's okay, but I think what would be helpful to the planning board is, if the school district needs something from us that we're not providing, if we understood that, we would make sure it's provided.
Right.
As Tom said, typically by the applicant, or if, you know, in this situation, the town happened to provide it.
Right.
But the response back and the timeliness of that response, for us, you know, we, we need to be able to keep moving our process forward.
Of course.
And we do make sure that we wait a significant amount of time before we close public hearings and public comment periods. And agencies like the school district and other agencies have even more time because we circulate and give plan information to them before the public hearing process starts.
Maybe what the school district has to do is a doc, because the school district deals with many towns, not just these.
Right.
But like the larger agencies, D C, D O T, they actually have a designated person for CEQA. And when a document comes in, the first document goes to the same person. And then, that person is responsible for coordinating it.
Yeah, we actually discussed that Monday night of having a board, a board liaison to the towns for this.
If they had a particular person that it could be aimed to.
That would be great.
Well, that's, I've been encouraging, I've been encouraging that, so I'm hoping that somebody will pay attention. Okay, so, I don't, I don't want to, I understand your expla, your explanation. I don't want to, if, if I could reach out to you, I'd love to just be able to talk to you. The last thing is, I would just like to get a little better understanding of the lottery process. I came across one of Mr. Carney's other projects in the Somers Project with Baldwin Place, where, you know, a flyer was put together discussing the project. It was a senior development, 55 and over. But it was, looks like he had either a working relationship, obviously, to help with the process with the Housing Action Council in Westchester. So, I'd just like to understand, does he plan on utilizing a Duchess County affiliate to assist him with this lottery? What's the actual process going to be? This was a project in Somers, and I found these in, on a pegboard in the city of Poughkeepsie in their offices. So, I just would like to get, I know he has explained it a couple of times, but I think that's a question that the community is still asking, and I think as we continue to move this process forward, I think that is a very important component. Because I was someone who said that, you know, if this project, you know, for workforce, it should be for community members first, and I understand that, you know, that can't be. And Tom gave a very good explanation at a prior meeting, and obviously, he has funding requirements, and the process has to be done in a specific way. So, I think for myself and other community members, I think a real definitive, clear explanation to the lottery process, because this is a project in Somers, and these pamphlets are going out to neighborhoods and areas and being marketed not anywhere near Somers. Now, I understand, you know, as a lottery, it, it can go anywhere. Everyone is eligible to submit an application, and if they fulfill, you know, the requirements and they get picked, obviously, they're entitled to live in the location. But again, if you could just, just give us an idea, is he going to be in charge of this lottery? Is he partnering with another agency here in-
Will have the applicant come up and walk us through it.
In Duchess, yeah, if he, if he wouldn't mind. Is he partnering with a, with an, with an agency here in Duchess like he did in Westchester to help him? Is the town getting involved in helping promote this? Just a better explanation, that's all. So, I appreciate everybody giving me the time, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Can we, let's just address the questions as they come up, if that's all right. So, two things. First, do we have any update from getting a Loop bus run to support your development right now? I know you were working on it last time, but-
We expect to have a meeting with the decision makers after the first week in June. People are out on leave right now. Part of my renewed pitch is going to be not just for this development, it's to bring the bus from the AMP down, and it gives us access to Town Hall and the library and the rec center. So, no, there's no commitment yet. The only commitment is to come in and provide transportation to the seniors and the disabled special needs population.
Okay.
But I'm going to continue that dialogue. We have worked with them in the past. Sean and I have worked with them on a couple other developments in Duchess, and we, the concept wasn't embraced in the beginning, but we were persistent, so.
Okay. We'd like you to be persistent.
I'm going to.
Okay. And then, if you don't mind, just walk us through the, and I know there's some, some requirements.
Sure.
Laws, and probably also for the, for the project funding itself, but just walk us through how that'll work and what it's going to look like.
Sure. There will be a lottery if we have one application more than the number of apartments. So, if we have 84 applications for 89 apartments, it's not necessary. But we expect with all of our developments, interest, what will happen is, there will be a period, probably three or four-week period where we advertise, and we say, an application must be received by a certain date. The application process is handled by my office, the Carney Realty Group. The project that the fellow just mentioned, my partner in Somers is the Housing Action Council. They're my not-for-profit partner. Same way as Abilities First is my not-for-profit partner. So, Housing Action Council is actually handling all of the marketing for the Westchester Housing Settlement. Not only is she handling our development as a partner, she's also the lead that everybody looks to, Rose Noonan, to market all of those units. Westchester County has a very specific set of requirements due to their, the Westchester settlement. We do not fall under those guidelines up here. So, Rose Noonan will not be involved. The Housing Action Council will not be involved in this lottery. This lottery will be handled by ourselves. So, what happens, back to the lottery itself, applications come in, they're timestamped, we check them for completion to ensure that they can go in the lottery, make sure they're signed, make sure everything's filled out. And then, we, with a couple of witnesses, we pick numbers out of a barrel or a hat, and then, we will process the applications according to the number that comes out, and also the income band, except for the 22 units that are set aside for Abilities First. Those 22 are separate, they're set aside. Abilities First has their own marketing program, which will be handled on a referral basis. So, Abilities First will handle their own referrals, and those 22 units will be filled that way. But the other 66 units will be processed through the lottery. So, our staff handles the applications, and we start calling people in for interviews. We, we call them, whether it's a one-bedroom, did they apply for a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, or a three-bedroom? And we start the, the process, the process of credit checks, criminal background checks, prior landlord history. And then, at the end, once the numbers, their income, a lot of people are over income, some people are under income, some people may have assets that are, that set them over. People could have situations that preclude them from, from living here. But once you get through that, then we get to the personal interview. And then, we do a personal interview, and then, at that point, if they're selected for an apartment, we, we project the date of when we think the CO is going to be in the particular building they're going into it to, and we stay in touch with them. This is all done with our employees. Sean and I supervise, we have probably 12 or 13 people in our management team that will handle this process. So, the lottery is to ensure that everybody, if there's more than 89 applications, then it is processed according to the number that comes out of the lottery. I will go back to Somers for a minute. Somers, we had the lottery. We had the supervisor come down, Rose Noonan was there that night, and there were a lot of people that really wanted apartments. And when they left that night, we picked about 300 and, I think, 300 people for 75 apartments. And there were a lot of long faces as they were walking out. There was one fellow there who needed an apartment for his parents, and I said, just relax. I've been through this before. Every development I've done, we've gone all the way to the end of the lottery. Not only did we go to the end of lottery here in Somers, we picked up another 60 applications after the lottery was over. At that point, the applications are handled on, on-
First come, first served.
First, first come, first served. We have, still have one two-bedroom apartment available. We've gone through over 400 applications in Somers, and we have one two-bedroom apartment available as of, as of this morning. So, everybody in that lottery had an, had an opportunity to, for an apartment. A lot of people turned them down. A lot of people, there, there's a couple different rent levels. Some people say, well, if I can only get the lower rent level, I'm not interested in the higher ones, and so forth. So, that's how, how the process works. But I've gone through every development we've done. We've done a lottery, and every development, we've gone all the way through the, everybody who has applied has at least had an opportunity or, or looked to be processed.
I just want to bring you back to the beginning of the process again, and how you are generating the applications to begin with. What, you said you'd advertise. What does that mean? Is it newspapers? Is it word of mouth? Is it community organizations?
We advertise, no, we advertise, we do an outreach. We do an outreach in newspapers. We do an outreach with different community groups. Some applications are available locally. With the town of Somers, we had applications that were available at Town Hall. But it is a, is a, it is a defined marketing plan that we follow, and we've used the same marketing plan for, you know, the last eight years. And we advertise all over. It's not just limited to here. It's not. We advertise, again, what is important is not who applies. What's important is who actually gets an apartment. 300 people apply, and you go through the process, and in the end, you wind up with 74 people out of 300. So, that's the process.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, maybe I'm reading into Mr. Slowshower's comments, but I thought the essence was the selection. And I think what we heard was, it's screening. There is no lottery in terms of-
No.
-luck or selection. It is screening.
Right. If, let's say you get number one.
Got it.
Let's say you get number one. You go through the same background checks as somebody who's number 300. It's the same process. It just gives you the opportunity to be processed before the fellow or woman at the end of 300.
Okay.
That's it. And let's say, here, it's, we don't have a lot of different income brackets, most of, all of our two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, except for the four two-bedrooms that Abilities First have, we're all up at 60% of median. And then, we have the four units that are market rate, if you will. We have two two-bedroom townhomes and two three-bedrooms. But what you find in some of the other developments will have different income brackets. And so, if somebody wants a lower lottery number, one, two, or 10, because that allows them to get that lower rent apartment. Where here, I don't think it's going to be applicable, because our rents are pretty consistent.
Okay.
Did I answer you, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, thank you.
And, and just, I, I know that you have the 22 units set aside for Abilities First. Another question was, would there be units available for veterans? I'm assuming that there's no, there's no reason a veteran couldn't apply, but there isn't a specific set aside?
There's not. Sean and I did the first Veterans Project in the Hudson Valley outside of New York City, Poughkeepsie Commons. It was a learning experience. We were able to give preference to a certain number of veterans if they could prove that they were disabled. So, it wasn't the, there's not a, a preference or a set aside for returning veterans. There's a preference for disabled veterans. And then, what you have to do in order to give that preference, you need to show that you can give the supportive services, similar to the supportive services that Abilities First is, is providing. We've done that in Poughkeepsie Commons. So, it's not, it's not a, it's, it's not the model we chose here. But I agree. The, these units will be open to, to everybody. We do have great contacts in, in the veterans, uh, community, and, uh, we will ensure that they will also be notified. Our friends at the VA, we stay in touch with them, referrals all the time. And we will, uh, it, have them as one of our community outreach, uh, groups, uh, when we do our outreach, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who do we have next on our list?
Anne Golda.
Anne?
Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to the program, I'm a resident of East Fishkill. I've lived here most of my life. I just don't think that this is quite where it needs to be for East Fishkill. I've got a lot of time invested in this town and I love this town, and I've been a big part of it. So I have a few things I want to bring up. First of all, one of the things we talked about the last meeting was an ISP, which is an individual service plan which will direct the care for those who are disabled. I spoke to my son Matthew, and I understand that Mr. Charney was going to offer you a redacted one. We talked about it as a family and we don't feel that a redacted one will answer your question. So I'm going to submit mine, you can make copies. All we've redacted are my son's ID numbers. I've also boxed out the parts that are the value for safety. And my, um, when I did mention to my son Matthew that this would be exposing him very publicly, he was okay with it. In fact, he offered, should you have questions, he'd be happy to come and explain his role in the ISP.
Okay.
So I am going to offer that.
I also want you to know, I, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we didn't actually redact these, they, we changed the names, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I do want, yeah. I do want you to see one.
Did, did you have an opportunity to see the plans that were submitted to the board that are part of our record now, after, after the last?
Not all of them, um, but I did want to bring up a few things.
Okay.
Um, first of all, I'm, for the senior citizen part and for the disabled, I actually have two senior citizens within my family. One who lives in a workforce housing situation and one who lives in a private situation. Both of them really, really, really questioned one washing machine for 15 people. The idea that you're going to have 15 senior citizens using it. So I asked my mother-in-law, "Could you do a survey on your floor and give me an idea?" And she figured out the average woman on her floor did four loads of laundry per week. So I'm going to assume then that Mr. Charney wants them to be up all night, because four times 15, each average load of wash took 90 minutes. And as she pointed out, um, I said, "Well, he claims you can walk across." And she said, "Well, a 93-year-old carrying bags of laundry in the snow and the ice." So I'd like that perhaps to be reconsidered, to, uh, expand that. The same thing goes for someone disabled in a wheelchair, asking them in bad weather to go across to where there are other additional laundry facilities. Um, my other question is, with the apartments for the disabled, particularly for those in wheelchairs, um, are we looking into a certain percentage of them truly being wheelchair accessible? Are we going to have deeper kick plates under the counters? Are we going to have lower sinks? Are we going to have roll-in showers? Um, and my cousin was a lot more forthcoming, because, um, in Vegas, there's a lot more of this. So they're able to be a lot more vocal, they don't have to be so quiet to lose their place. She said roughly 30% of the apartments where she is are wheelchair accessible. And it's one thing to say, "Okay, they can go there," but if Billy can't get into the shower because it's a tub, or the bathroom isn't big enough for him to maneuver his wheelchair, he's lost his freedom, actually. He hasn't gained the freedom with the idea of the apartment. So I was wondering if a certain percentage were truly going to be wheelchair accessible.
We'll clarify that.
Okay, um, transportation, um, our loop system really doesn't have any money to expand any Fishkill run. And I also asked Mary Ann, I said, "Well, you know, Jeff and I begged you to live with us. Why didn't you use the senior citizen for a loop?" And she said, "Well, first of all, you have to call, you have to make an appointment, they aren't necessarily going to be on time. You can't guarantee that you're going to be able to get back home within a set time, because our loop has limited resources. They don't have the money." Which also means we don't have a cab system in our town. I'm concerned about the lack of sidewalks, I understand there's four feet, I get that. But when you start talking about families with wheelchair, or not wheelchairs, but strollers, walking to town on the edge of the road, or we start talking about the winter when there's snow, if it's a winter like this past winter, you maybe only had a foot access on the side, because there were times we had so much snow and ice. Another concern of mine is fire and rescue. We're a volunteer fire department, we're a volunteer rescue squad, we've acknowledged that they need training. Who's going to do the training? How are we going to provide ongoing training? Our fire company and rescue squad have a very high turnover rate. We no longer do turnkey training within it, and I know what I'm talking about, because I was a turnkey trainer many years ago for the fire department and rescue squad. I was one of the first persons to even come into this town and teach EMT-level first aid. So, we don't do that anymore. How are we going to guarantee that those people can continue their training? And my other concern is with Dr. Fox, who I do appreciate. Um, I would like to know the structure, because I, I'm still concerned with the lack that there's not going to be 24-hour supervision or availability for the disabled. I'd like to know how the structure is going to be. Are we going to have one set person who's in charge of the program? What is it going to be? Or is it going to be just a person who's out there? Is it going to be an actual case manager who kind of runs the program and supervises it? I would like to know more about that. So, that's my list of questions for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Let's talk about Abilities First, if that's okay. I was going to say Abilities First, first, but that-
A little redundant.
So I know that you, you did provide us with a few of the, um, and I, forgive me, I- ISP, is that?
Uh, they were the safeguard sections of ISPs, yes.
Okay.
Individualized Service Plans. And, um, I don't know if it made the content, because I was sitting back there, but, um, all I did, all we did was change the names to pseudonyms to protect individual identity, we didn't change any of the content of those.
So, when you, when it's, when we said redacted, it's not actually redacted, it's just names changed?
Yeah, and when I mentioned redacted at first, what, what I was planning to do was black out the names, but decided rather to replace them with, with, um, fictional names.
Okay, that, that's fine.
And we, um, I'm sorry, we just, we selected these because these are, um, safeguard sections for people that we do believe would be appropriate for this setting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, did the board have a chance to look at those?
I did not.
Okay, so maybe, we had a chance to read them, okay. I didn't have any questions specifically with regard to them. I guess the one, the one thing I would say is that I didn't have a sense of, um, how a true emergency would be handled through those. I mean, most of them address like the day-to-day, if you need something, there'd, there'd be plans and things like that. So, um, I don't know if that's in a different section or a different type of planning for the building, or whether it's, what that would look like. But I think, um, back to the original question from, from the public was, um, what will the structure and management be? Who, who will be staffed in the building? And, um, I understood that it may not necessarily be 24 hours if none of the residents require that. But just give us a sense of who would be there, what their training would be in the event of an emergency and that sort of thing, like a-
Yeah, it's, um, I, I guess the first thing I would say is it's, it's difficult in some ways to answer that question until we know who is actually going to live there. Because what we do is we, we look at what we call person-centered planning. We put the, we put the person's needs first, each individual person, and kind of craft a plan around, around them. So we may have people living in this community who only require, you know, somebody to check in on them a couple of times a week. We may have people living in this community who, um, who need somebody for five to 10 hours a week to do some more intensive kind of caretaking and, and training and those kinds of things. So, if I'm, the best way I can explain it is, there are kind of two levels of management and supervision. There's individual management and supervision. So if I'm a person living in this community, my needs would be assessed. And I would have a service plan that identifies what kind of support I need. Um, and all of my, um, history in terms of, um, medical issues that would, that would play into safety or, um, any kind of emergency, medical emergency would be taken into consideration for those things. We would provide trained staff to deal with those things. The backup plan is always who to call, you know, you, you always have to know who to call if there's something that needs immediate attention that you can't address on your own. Now, of course, we're not going to place somebody in this setting who does not have the ability to make that phone call or make that judgment call, that they need, you know, some, some kind of help. So I mentioned there's two levels of supervision, there's the individual level. So here's my individual plan, and I may have, I mentioned last time, community habilitation, which is, um, a staff member that's paid and trained by Abilities First, that comes in on this, on a schedule to help me, um, deal with whatever my individual needs are. It could be, um, my finances and balancing my, my accounts, it could, could be going to the grocery store, it could be filling my medications at the pharmacy, it could be, um, activities of daily living, like hygiene and bathing and, and things like that. Then there is the, the next level of supervision, which is, um, somebody who's responsible for everybody from Abilities First in, in this community. Now during, and, and that's going to happen in multiple ways. During, um, business hours, there will be, um, staff members from Abilities First occupying the offices that are, that are going to be there. Um, we're going to have service coordination staff and community habilitation staff on site. Depending on the needs of the people that are living in the community at the time, we may put somebody there, a trained staff person there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, if that's necessary. And there would be a way for every resident of the community to contact that staff member, you know, if they needed anything. And so that's not an individual support, it's a support for everybody in the community. And there will be 26 people, um, getting support from Abilities First there. Our hope and our plan would be not to have a staff member there 24/7 in the long run. And if there, if there continues to be a need for somebody there 24/7 in the long run, um, we would evaluate the people living there and, and maybe find other placements, other placements for them, because it would indicate that they need a higher level of support. This community is really just for people who are very, very capable, very independent people, who are working in the community, getting around in the community on their own, and are really just kind of ready for this opportunity that, that the system has not provided before. Um, so they're being held back by limited opportunities, and the opportunity to live in a place like this is going to match, is going to match their needs. Um, we're also looking into, uh, remote monitoring systems. And we would have, the plan is that if somebody needs this and it would help them be or feel more independent, we could rely on certain kinds of technology so that we could stay in contact with people, but not actually physi- physically be on, be on site, which I think are really good options that many providers are, are looking at. The other thing I just wanted to mention real quick is that we did confirm with Dutchess County that, um, the paratransit system is available to all of our folks. And as long as they're within three-quarters of a mile from a fixed route, uh, which I do believe this is less than three-quarters of a mile from Route 82.
That's correct.
So the smaller, um, paratransit bus, um, which is, I guess, a half-bus, uh, would come into the complex and pick people up as, as scheduled and as needed and take them to the fixed route.
Is that something you have a lot of experience with? Because I think we're hearing that sometimes you have to call or make an appointment, or it's not available when you need it to be. Is that, is that your experience as well?
Well, um-
Because I think you also, um, I'm sorry, um, I think you also had said at, at one point that Abilities First also the ability, had the- ability, sorry, I'm going to go ahead and say it, to provide transportation at different times as well. And I don't know if that still exists with the project where it's currently located or, or what the plan was for that.
Uh, yes, um, again, there are several ways we can provide transportation. In, in some cases, it may be a service coordinator or a community habilitation staff member who actually uses their own vehicle to take somebody someplace. Um, we do have our own transportation vehicles that we've gotten on grant from the Department of Transportation that we can use. Um, this would just be another layer of possibilities. And, and I do think you're right, some people have experienced some frustration with the, you know, with the availability of paratransit. However, I think Dutchess County is now making a new commitment to making it more available and flexible for people. We actually just had, um, Cynthia Ruiz, who's the Commissioner of, um, Dutchess County Transportation at our organization a couple of weeks ago to give a presentation. And we're going to be hosting a forum, um, countywide for people who want to have input into the enhancement redesign of the paratransit system for people with disabilities. So we're encouraged by, by some enhancements there.
Okay, great. Um, I don't know if you're the right person to answer the question about the ADA units or the, perfect, okay, thank you, sorry.
As a designer for this type of project and for the requirements that the state agency, HCR, looks at, we spend an enormous time, uh, up as part of our, uh, construction drawings and the detailing of this project on accessibility. So, so I don't lose everyone, um, looking at, uh, building number one, which I think that is building number one, that building is an elevator building, so that building has basically 100% accessible apartments, because the first floor and the second floor, you can get to, the first floor is at grade, it's 100% accessible. The second floor is basically accessible by the elevator. So in New York State, there's a difference between accessible apartments and adaptable apartments. An adaptable apartment, this building has 100% adaptable apartments, which means that all the bathrooms are the correct size for, uh, a handicap, uh, turning radius. All the fixtures are correct in terms of the required, uh, spaces around them. All the doorways are three feet. Basically, the way New York State delineates between an accessible apartment and an adaptable apartment is, uh, grab bars or things that can be installed with a screwdriver and a hammer, hand tools. So, you have basically constructed, in this particular building, 100% accessible, I'm sorry, adaptable apartments. So that, so that a certain number of them can be made into accessible apartments without any structural change. So, part of the funding request, HCR, uh, we basically volunteer, and we get credits for this in our application, to basically, for the entire project, build, uh, 10% accessible apartments to start with that are mobility, uh, for the mobility impaired, and 4% of the entire number for audiovisual impaired. So those two sets of numbers are basically in our unit chart. Those numbers will be, uh, there's a certain number of mobility impaired, uh, units that will be accessible right from the start, and a certain number of audiovisual that will be built that way with strobes and, uh, sensing, uh, devices right from the start.
Would they all be in building one?
No, that's the, so, so basically, building one is the elevator building, so that's 100%.
And I just want to, building one is, is that the Abilities First building, or is it?
That's where the one bed, eighteen, uh, one bedrooms are in building one, yes.
So what I'm saying actually has nothing to do with, with Abilities First, because some of their people may require that.
Right.
Other people might not, so this is kind of a generic thing.
That's why I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand whether, you have building one up here. I'm, I'm assuming that you're, you said building one would be 100%, and forgive me, it's not accessible, you said, adaptable.
Correct. In other words, you can get to the front door of all these apartments, and then inside the apartment, you're going to find an apartment that's an adaptable apartment, that, some of them have already been made accessible. Some of them, depending on the demand or on the tenant, can be made to be fully accessible.
Okay.
And accessibility has a broad range, it's not just people in a wheelchair, it could be blind people, deaf, or whatever.
Okay.
So, as far as the rest of the, um, project, that's the, there's the elevator building, which is building number one. Building number two is, um, garden-style apartments. So you would find only half of those, 50% of those, the ones at grade, are adap- adaptable.
Okay.
And then the townhouse units, there are a certain number of those units, which we're also required to have, uh, be made, one-story townhouse units. So those are, the, the unit on the end there, I, I think that's a three-bedroom. So that's a one-story, um, adaptable townhouse unit.
Okay.
So HCR and the federal government look to make sure that we have, depending on our, uh, unit types, one-twos and three-bedrooms, and also the fact that we have townhouses and a corridor building, that we have sprinkled throughout accessibility, so that an accessible person is not just in this building, that they're throughout the site, and that's basically the law. So, um, so yeah, and, and we have, we, they, the state agency looks at, has looked for years at, are, are you providing showers, or are you providing bathtubs? And they've gone back and forth, um, because, and they've allowed us some flexibility now, because, um, if you get, uh, children- because if you get children, people want a bathtub, accessibility, sometimes people want showers. So again, we have both of those types of units already in the project.
Okay.
Sprinkled throughout. So beyond that, there's another concept called visitability. If I don't live here, if I come here and I'm disabled, I can visit all of the townhouse units. That means I can get into the first floor, I can use the bathroom there, it's at grade, there, you don't step up into a townhouse unit, there's no basement, so it's all at grade. So those units are visitable, which is a HUD term.
Okay.
So visitability for all the townhouse units, for all of the corridor ones in building number one, and for all the grade-level ones in building number two.
If someone is, requires the adaptable unit to be accessible, is that something that, that you would take care of, or would the tenant be expected to do that?
We do.
You do that, okay. Nina, I guess, with regard to the, to the question about emergency services, I, I know that we have, we have comments from the Fire Advisory Board, and we're also awaiting the Fire Commissioner comments, I'm assuming they would cover any concerns when we receive those comments back.
Agreed.
Do we expect, or have we had any com, I, I don't know if we've had any feedback yet from the Commissioner?
Michelle has spoken with the Fire Board of Commissioners, who have given her a verbal okay, but she's awaiting written notice.
Okay, so verbally, they didn't express concern at this time?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Who, who's the next person on our list?
Margaret, yeah. Hey. Good evening. I've been East Fishke resident for many years, and I came in today to voice my opinion to the project I just recently became aware of. Clearly, if you want to know anything in this town, you have to drive around, look for these signs for public hearing, because no notification. This land here across the street was sold, rezoned, and have no idea, I live across the street, why I wasn't notified as a, as a, as a resident of East Fishke. Today, I have a petition of 300 residents who's having, you know, a huge concern about the traffic, school, and wetland in East Fishke for this project.
Okay. You want to share with us? Thank you, we'll make this part of our record. And you, and I, you said it's primarily traffic, and I didn't catch the other, traffic schools?
School, traffic, water, wetland, and white, white life. Let's start with the first subject, the traffic. You know, I contacted Supervisor Hickman, and I asked him, why you move the project from Jones Mother Road to this location? And he was saying, there's a fireh, firefighter, fire from, volunteer, told him there is really a traffic in that area. So what's that mean? I got shocked, like, my fellow engineer, his study was disregarded. And then he moved the project near the firehouse, which make it worse. This is not acceptable. That's make me now wondering when this is traffic done? Is it done in the wintertime, when no school, when we, when we have like heavy snow, closed school, was no traffic? This is the right time to do the traffic? That's the right time? I've been, I know, I'm in this business, I know what the device is to count traffic. I see, I didn't see any ATR on 376. All I saw in one, on 52 last month, and that's not going to give us any information about the traffic. Let's say about this area, I know I see this picture here, but this picture doesn't show, you should give me a large picture, we show what we have in this area. Let's start. We have a town hall, town library, Gehead Elementary School, firehouse, daycare, catering hall, town park, gas station, church, pond, sewer plant, police station, what we need else? All this is not going to create the traffic, and you're going to tell me the traffic study is right? I don't believe this. Let's talk about this 89 unit. Do we know what the, how many going to live there? I did my math, 312. And you tell me you have 45 cars they're going to be using, that's only 45 cars. But correct me, is there's any job here in Fishke, in East Fishke, beside AMB? So for sure, there's 90% of these tenants, they'll be commuting, they're going to need more cars, but don't tell me this 45 cars. And I'm just hearing about this non-device control, crosswalk in the middle of the road. That's, 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 that's can be, that's going to create a lot of, lot of, lot of accident in that road.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch...
You know, like the crosswalk?
Oh, the crosswalk, I'm sorry.
The proposed in, non-device, crosswalk in the middle of the street. This is not, I never see that, you know, I've been doing this for a long time with my experience, this is like, that's exactly what the lawyer looking for. When he sees something like that, that's what he looking for, when accident happen. And who's going to pay for all this lawsuit? Us, us. Let's talk about the parking. From my experience, this kind of housing, the parking doesn't come free with the apartment. And the tenant has to rent these spaces. And you're going to tell me there is two space for a better apartment, and if there's a low-income person, he's not going to, if you tell him $200 or $100, we're going to wait on the list?
I'm sorry, are you talking about parking within this development itself?
Yeah, yeah.
Are we charging for parking? There's no charge for parking, every unit will have parking.
So you tell me every, every apartment is going to, is going to have two space?
If, if necessary?
One and a half or one and a half?
Is that before land banking or after land banking? I'm sorry, you know what, let's, bear with us, Jeff, go, we'll have you finish your comments and then we'll...
No, but you understand this one, please. When you say one and a half or two?
Sir, sir, what I'll do, because we can't pick up his comments for, for our record for our mic.
Well, I would like to know, you know, because...
What we'll do is we'll have Jeff come up back to your desk.
I figure out that one and a half, I don't know how you're going to park one and a half. That's fine. Maybe behind each other, but when we have a gathering in the summertime? What is, you know, you're going to have some gathering there, only have a lot of people going to come and visit. Where are they going to park? Of course, he's not going to let them park inside there, there's no room. So where are they going to go? They're going to go to 376, along 376. That's where you proposing the people's going to walk. And, you know, that's why I understand. Later on, they're going to chase these people from 376, say, no, you can't park here. Where are they going to go? They're going to go on the side of the street, it's going to go to my house. Who's going to make them move their car from my house? Him? No. Who's going to do it? I want to know. Let's talk about the housing itself. You say in this one for teachers, police officers, but really, how many of these will be qualified? You know, you know, like spouse, husband, you know, teachers, is, they're going to make more money than the, the minimum for this apartment? So who's going to really, so that's mean, we're going to bring with the lottery some other people from outside East Fishke. Nobody in East Fishke is going to use it, slim to nothing, and he's mentioned is a lottery system, so I don't think so, anybody from East Fishke is going to benefit from this apartment. And again, where are they going to find a job? The only place I think is AMB. And AMB, you've got to check with AMB. Is he hiring? What's the minimum rate? Does he have enough force to take, or how we can say, like 260 people? No, I'll tell you. What the next? Either they're going to stand here by the corner, asking like a delivery, asking for work. That's what we're going to do. Let's go, discuss the school. You know, my son has 27 kids in the class, and there's a statement from the school website say, bad behavior is amplified in large classroom. So what's that mean? You know, like, now he has 29, next year he's going to have 35, what he going to learn? This, discuss the water here. Now you're planning, we're talking about what we say, 320 residents, and that's, if you do the math, you're going to, how much you, I'm assuming is a well water, right? You're going to bomb the water from the wetland?
No, it's municipal.
But where's the water is going to come from?
There's various wells around the town that support it.
It's a well. You're going to bomb water, you know, it's municipal, but it's going to come from the ground. So you, you're going to assume, you know, my, my calculation tell me like 40,000 gallons this project is going to consume. Why we keep doing this, you know, why we keep bombing, you know, water in the ground is like money in the bank. Don't abuse it, you will lose it. And finally, the air pollution.
I'm sorry, the...
Air pollution. It's been, this been studied? You know, this area, everything, everywhere is a parking lot, cars, and we have parking where people having sport, they playing baseball, and what we doing to them? We bring more cars, we cut more trees. So you know, this, this is a wrong location for, for this project. So please consider another location in this area. You know, it's a good cause project, but it's a wrong location, and it's going to really affect this, this community here. Thank you.
Brendan, let me just start with the traffic.
Sure.
Do you recall when the traffic counts were taken?
I, I can't give you the specific dates, but I will tell you that whenever we do traffic counts, they're always done at a time, not, you know, not during summer months and, and when school is in session.
When school is...
And we, and we also do the counts on particular days of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. We exclude Mondays and Fridays, because traffic tends to be erratic, more erratic on those days.
Okay. And then if...
We, we did do, we did do, we, we have historical automatic, automatic car counters for that road, we've used historical data that the DOT does on their coverage counts for all of their state highway systems, including 82, 376, and 52. And then we did conduct individual manual turning counts at the town hall driveways and at 82 and 376, and 52 and 376.
Okay. And just, I, I know the, you mentioned there were peak hour cars of 45, I think in the morning, and 65 in the evening. I don't, I, I, can you just clarify what peak hour is and what, what your expectation is about the total number of cars that would have ingress and egress, say, in the, in an average morning and in an average evening?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could expect that the majority of the cars that would be on site would, would either enter or exit during, during, you know, the morning and during, during the evening. But what we look at is the worst-case scenario, so we look at the, the peak hour, and we identify that peak hour from the counts that we actually take, so that we're looking, we're looking at that, the trip generation that we get, that's, we get that from the ITE Manual, Institute of Transportation Engineers, where they have done studies across the country for similar types of developments, of similar types of size, to, and, and that, that data has been submitted and collated into this manual, so you can look at different types of developments. And in this case, you know, apartment housing, there's lot, there's been lots of studies for, for this type of scenario, and that's where the, the peak hour trip generation rates come from, so...
So, so based on, based on 89 units here, and I think one being a super unit, so 88 units that would likely have someone who may or may not be working outside the home, what is the average morning trips? Forget peak hour for a second, but is, is it 88? Is it 150? What, what does that typically look like? And I know you did some...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I couldn't tell you specifically, I, like I said, I, I would think that the majority of those units would, you know, that, that, you know, we have 22 that were set aside for, for disabled persons, so that, those people owning cars are probably going to be limited. So I think that number from 89 would come down to, you know, something in, in the 60s. And then, you know, you could anticipate that of those 60, of those 60-some units, that probably the majority of them are going to have a car, and the majority would be exiting the site, you know, during the morning time, but not necessarily all at once in the peak hour. You're going to see that, you're going to see that, you know, we count, we count traffic generally for a two-hour period of time when we know the peak is at there, so we'll count traffic from, say, in the morning, from 7 to 9, and then between those two hours, we'll identify the hour where the highest traffic is, and we'll choose to analyze that hour, because that's the worst-case scenario, so...
And similar in the evening?
Similar, the same, the same exact scenario in the evening.
Okay. Thanks.
And then, and that's, and I think I mentioned in the evening, the, the trip generation rate is higher, it's in, it's in the 60s, and that's because, you know, it's, more people are, are leaving and coming at that time, as opposed to in the morning, it would be more of just people exiting, exiting the apartments.
Okay. Jeff, can I just have you come up and, and explain the, the parking as it's going to be installed, proposed right now, and then what the land banking looks like, and where we come up with the one and a half spaces?
Sure. Your code requires us to provide for two parking spaces per unit, 89 units, 178 parking spaces are accommodated for in the site plan. We have land banked, I believe, 40 of those, which means they could be developed into the future, there's space set aside if that need is there. Based on Mr. Carney's experience, we're providing 138 spaces, which is about one and a half per unit, which we believe is ample. If in the future that's not true, the land bank parking cer, can certainly be built out, and it's shown on the drawing, it's laid out, and it's accommodated for within the utilities plan, et cetera.
Okay. And I know that someone made reference to, and Mr. Carney, maybe this is for you, but somebody made, we made comment about potentially folks parking outside of the development itself for events and things like that. What's your method of controlling that?
I'm not familiar with events at our communities. I'm not, I don't, we don't sponsor events, we don't condone events.
Well, let's use an example like Thanksgiving. So people may have a higher number of visitors coming if the spots are full, what is the typical methods that you would use to make sure that we don't have cars parking on 376?
Quite honestly, I've never had that experience, anywhere. I've never had that, I've never had that experience. I think with Thanksgiving, I think there's a trade-off with all holidays. Some people come, some people leave, and I think it balances out. But I've never, honestly, I'm not being evasive, I...
And in the projects that you have, you haven't had issues of people parking in other neighborhoods and...
No, no, no. The only, the only time there was a complaint was, we were doing, working on the east end of Beacon, and we had eight spots behind our, our, our building there, and we needed some more spots in the front, and some of the store owners were complaining that the tenants were taking up spots in front of the stores instead of parking around the back and taking the stairs up. That, that's really been the extent of it. I think what, what Jeff has, has proposed here, the 130-some-odd spaces, and then the land bank, I, I think is more than, more than adequate.
Okay.
Just for the record, I mean, I think that if there were ever a situation, and I agree with you, the odds of this ever happening, you have a sea of parking here, people would never park on 376. I mean, if I were faced with that situation, I was looking at all these lots on Thanksgiving that I'm sure have none a car to be seen, that's where I would park.
Okay. The income, can you just refresh our, our record on the income levels and give us a rough estimate? If you don't have the numbers right exactly there, but just, just give us a sense, I think it was somewhere around the median income of Dutchess County, had percentages over and under that?
Mm-hmm. The two bedrooms will be rented to families approximately 46,860 up to about 52,000. The, the one bedrooms will be less, we have the 22 for Abilities First, and then, you know, earmarking some for seniors, can be anywhere from the low 30s up to 40,000. The three bedrooms will range somewhere from 47,000 up to about 56,200, depending on the number of people. And then we have the four townhomes that have no income restrictions, two two bedrooms and two three bedrooms. So let's say somebody applies, and they find out they're either, for some reason, over income, somebody just got a raise, they're over income, they have an opportunity here, they have to pay a little more money, but they have an opportunity here, and I, that's a nice, it's a nice option to have.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. I know we've touched on schools... I know we've touched on schools already. Tom or Scott, with regard to the municipal water supply, I know we have wells, various wells that support that. This is all monitored by the Health Department, I'm assuming, water quality, water quantity?
Yes.
Anything?
No, typically, we take a look at, say, our past three-year average use, which we have, and based on what our permitted yields are, we have enough capacity as it stands for this project. I think the number was seventeen, was that the maximum, something like that? Even though your projection actually less than that, based on border health standards, seventeen. They're typically, we've seen almost double what the actual usage is, border health standards.
Okay. And Nina, I don't know if this is the right question for you, but I'm, I'm assuming that a residential use is a fairly low risk of air pollution. Is that?
Yeah, this site is not located in a non-attainment area, so the only real-
We can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The project site is not located in a non-attainment area. The only source of emissions would likely be HVAC onsite and temporary air quality impacts during construction, all of which would be mitigated, and none of which would rise to a level of concern.
Okay, thank you. We have the next name on our list? Rich?
Hi, I'm Rich Wenzick. I'm a little concerned about the access out here with sidewalks, and it seems like what's happening here is you got this development here, and then all of a sudden, you're just letting them all out onto three-seventy-six. Fin for yourself. I've lived on three-seventy-six since nineteen eighty-five, and it's a disaster. You've got semis coming through here, the peak times, sometimes it's ten, fifteen minutes just to get out of the driveway. Where are these, where's these cars going? Where are, you know, you get them out, people out, there's no sidewalks. There's nowhere to go. Is there any planning for that? Is anything set up that this thing goes through, well, we're gonna be putting in sidewalks through here? Sidewalks should be put in now. You need a traffic light there? DOT, are they gonna go for that? I don't know. It's, you're gonna lose a kid or something out there on that street, and that's easy to be done. It's, it's a scary situation. It's just, you're unloading a lot of people onto that saturated street now, and a very heavily travels thing. You've got these semis coming through by my house. I can't even open up the windows during the day, during the summertime. The noise is unbelievable. It's just, it's bing, bing, bing. Yeah, ten o'clock at night, it isn't bad, but that, that is my big concern. And then what happens, you know, I'm listening to holidays. You know, influx of a lot of people coming to see their, the parking lot fills up. Where do they go? Do they go out on the street? Do they park out on the street? There's no room for somebody to walk along there. Are they gonna be parking in my driveway? Or on my property? What happens with it? Is there any, any auxiliary parking for, for extra parking? That one and a half things is, it doesn't make any sense.
Right, the one and a half is what is currently proposed to be built, and then the applicant is land banking an additional number of spaces that would allow at least two per unit if we found that the parking lot was crowded. So the town would have the ability to say to the, to the applicant, if the need rose, that they need to install their land bank parking, and likewise, the applicant would have the ability to come to the town and say, "We need to install our land bank parking so that we have more parking in our, in our development."
But what about, and I have a little problem here. I have a hard time hearing any of you. I couldn't hear nothing here. I've got these things cranked right up to the top.
Sorry.
Unfortunately, I'm deaf, going deaf. But, so, you know, you all might be repeating yourself because I'm not hearing you, you know? But the thing is, you know, more, yeah, they'll fin for themselves inside there. But once they come out, and they're out on that road, where do these kids go? Where do they walk? You know? Put a light in there. Now they gotta cross. Who's gonna, is the DOT gonna go for that kind of stuff? I mean, you know, I don't really wanna see a light there, but you're gonna need something because people have to, have to get across the street. And if they keep it on this side of the street, you've got houses that are right on the street that are three or four feet away from the, the, back a hundred years ago, all the only thing that was going through there was cows and horses. My house is twenty feet off the road.
Yeah.
I'd like to have it way in the back, but that's not the way they built them back there. You know, so I mean, I don't know where you're gonna go with these sidewalks, and I don't, I haven't heard nothing about any planning on that, any, anything up.
What we, what we talked about was being able to install some type of crosswalk, which would likely be not a signalized intersection, but it would likely be striping on the road with caution signs and things like that. I agree with you. It's not, it's not ideal, and at some point-
I mean, a crosswalk, Lori, going across that road, I mean, if there's no flashing lights or something to, to slow people down, I mean, you can have a cop sitting there all day long with radar detector. It ain't happening. I mean, I, I watch them go through there.
Yeah. Well, and I think Brendan mentioned that it's, it's probably not likely that the DOT is going to allow it, but-
So what do you do? Do you wait until somebody gets killed out there? Have these kids going across the street to go into the park? It's a scary situation.
Department of Transportation.
It's, it's on us, really. I mean, if you don't have the access in and out, you knock it down. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan, I know we've looked at a couple of different ways to move pedestrians around the site, and one of the things we had also looked at was potentially having, and I'm gonna, where the road continues to the path, kind of joins up with where the emergency access would be, coming out of the back of the property and coming back down to three-seventy-six. Have we looked at that also to see whether that can be a sidewalk that would be well off three-seventy-six? I know we had talked about that originally, but where are we with that right now?
Yeah, I don't think that was developed further, and, you know, Jeff can go talk about that further, but, you know, mainly having something off the road, you know, that would be potentially not lit, or, you know, it wouldn't make a lot of sense or be that feasible to go through the wooded area to come out at a different place on three-seventy-six. So if there were gonna be any additional facilities, it would probably make more logical sense at this juncture for them to be along the three-seventy-six corridor. But, you know, certainly I think-
Same question with regard to sidewalks along three-seventy-six.
Right. And I think, you know, I mean, I think there are, you know, there are some, some planning aspects that go in to all developments, you know. You know, it's sort of not, you know, not necessarily practical that everything can be built on, on day one or to facilitate one development, but that thought process is out there. I mean, we've laid some of that stuff out to the DOT, even, even the town has, you know, generated some future master planning of even this area and the Cannon property, so, you know, that, those thoughts are there. And I think it is recognized that there's gonna be the potential for people to need to cross three-seventy-six, so we're still looking to address that issue in a way that, you know, that's gonna satisfy the requirement and something that's gonna be able to be approved by the DOT. A traffic signal like a, is probably something that's not gonna be practical or approvable by the DOT, you know, based on the amount of traffic that's on three-seventy-six and the amount of traffic that is potentially generated from this site. But there are other, there are other things that are available. You can, I mean, there are crossing signs, crossing signs that actually can be lit, you know, that would, that flash when, when people will cross the road, so there are other, you know, sort of traffic calming techniques that we could look at, you know, provide the safest crossing that we can at this juncture.
Okay. So when you're meeting with the DOT, if we can just walk through what those options are and see if there's something that is appropriate? And then Tom, I guess the, the other question or comment I have is, at different times and on different areas of the town, I think we've talked about having sidewalk districts and things like that. If there's an appropriate, maybe not to form the district right now, but if there's an appropriate point where we would collect towards some future expansion of pedestrian access that might be appropriate or something we should talk about or think about? And I guess, Mr. Carney, I would look at you, look to you to say, you know, is there, is there something you expect with development like this with pedestrian access, or do you expect most people to be driving? We do expect there to be children there, so do you have? I guess I'm just looking for your thoughts on that as well, because you hear the concern, we've had it for, we've had it in every discussion we've probably had so far, is pedestrian access.
Yeah, I'll speak for Ken on this. We've actually met with the town, with Brendan, and talked about some of the bigger plans that hopefully will manifest themselves. As you know, the town owns the property to the north, the balance of the Cannon property. As someone said, the master plan for that is to be developed someday. There's this area in the front along three-seventy-six, which I think Tom pointed out, was identified in one of your master plans as a municipal use. The concepts that have been discussed, this is, this is a concept that Brendan's office put together. I'd rather he speak to it than us, but we have expressed our agreement to work with it if it comes to fruition, and the timing of our entrance and our construction, you know, may precede the construction and the ability to get this funded, designed, and built. But Ken has said all along, and I'll look to him to acknowledge it, that, you know, he's a willing participant in this, and certainly, we would love to see this happen, and we'd love to be able to direct our pedestrians through and have a controlled intersection. But again, there's multiple parties. All parties have to be willing to participate. Ken has expressed his willingness to do that, and he reinforces that.
Okay, thank you. And anything, anything we should go over with regard to the
I mean, this, this is one of the, you know, one of the concept plans that was put together, you know, trying to look at future development and, you know, some of the, some of the issues that are in this corridor. So, you know, as Jeff mentioned, it's, it's not something that is necessarily practical for this one development, but as other development happens and other, other players become involved, you know, this is something that is a concept, you know, that could help facilitate some of the issues. I mean, the gentleman is correct. I mean, the posted speed limit out there is thirty-five miles an hour, and we've observed much higher speeds than that, you know, approaching forty-five miles an hour.
Traffic study said forty-five, right?
Yeah, so-
Okay.
So, you know, traffic, traffic calming features that can be incorporated would certainly benefit this, this segment of the corridor.
Okay, thank you. Next name on our list? Tom?
Good evening, I'm Tom Hurley. I live right here in the Hamlet. And I would just a couple of things with regard to that rendering, or this rendering here, to the, the property lines to the west and northwest right there. Are those considered buffer zones at all with regard to wetlands and-
They're wetlands, I believe, at least to the west.
It's just a slight intrusion into a buffer of the wetlands for stormwater retention area.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's all outside of the-
So that, that would be?
Like up in here somewhere.
Correct.
There are ponds right here, to some degree here.
That's the wetlands through there.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're picking up your comments for the record. So we're indicating that the west side of the property is primarily wetlands?
It may be helpful to point out that what happens with the wetlands is not only does a certified wetlands person go out and flag it, then D E C confirms it.
Yeah.
So the state D E C confirms where the wetlands is and what the hundred-foot line is.
All right.
So, and they'll consider any permit applications.
But-
But further development into those wetlands is not, not expected.
Okay, I see, okay, all right. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott?
I've been in the whole borough since ninety-eight. This is really my first time coming to find out about stuff. So all these detailed plans, and I mean, is there a place online or a place where I could get all this information and take a better look at it, and that, five after nine on a Tuesday night? So I can take a little bit, be ready for the next meeting?
Yes, we have copies of all of our plans in the, in the planning office here in town hall. And Pam, is this also in the library, just in the planning office? Just in the planning office here? When you come in the door, it's, it's straight down, it's that first door you see when you come, when you come in the door, right, right straight down the hallway here.
Okay. And some of the concerns while everybody was talking, you said twenty-two of the units are gonna be for people with disabilities or abilities, depending on how you're looking at it. Is, are you talking physically?
Sir, I'm sorry, I just, you just need to speak towards, towards us, because we can't hear what you're saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. Are you talking physical, mental disabilities or abilities?
We'll, we'll have the doctor come up and give you a quick rundown.
All right, that's, that's what I wanted to find out. The other thing with, on the DOT part, on the, is it just one entrance in and one entrance out?
It's, it's one, yeah, it's, it's one primary access to be used all the time. There's also emergency access, where if there was an accident or something happened, they would have another way to get back out to three-seventy-six.
Now, are they proposing left-hand and right-hand turn lanes?
Not at this time.
You know, you have somebody making a left somewhere, and cars coming the other way, and then you have people trying to go around, or just more of a safety issue than anything else. That's what, that's my concern. And you said the bus, they're trying to get a bus route to come up three-seventy-six? Okay.
That's correct.
And that, there's plenty of easement for the DOT. Would the bus be indentation into that? So it's not stopping directly on three-seventy-six? Would the bus would pull? Like, sometimes you look online, the bus pulls right there next to the curb, and there's no indentation for the bus to go. Is that the same situation here? Or would there be a true bus stop where it would pull in?
Well, that would probably be come out of the discussions with the Loop. If they decided to extend it, they'll talk about what they need to stop there. Right now, it's just a shelter and sidewalk for the schoolchildren.
Okay. So we're not talking about the public transportation, just strictly talking about the kids?
But they're talking to the Loop, which is the public transportation.
It's for the children, but also if the Loop run did come to this location, that, that shelter could also be used by other, other individuals who are waiting for the public bus.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. Could I just have you give us a quick rundown of?
Yeah, sure. So everybody that is going to live in this community that is getting services from Abilities First will be deemed eligible prior for what are called services under the New York State Office for People with Developmental Disabilities. Developmental disability has to manifest before the age of twenty-two years old. And under that umbrella, there's a plethora of different kinds of conditions, and ranging from intellectual disability, previously known as mental retardation. We also serve many people who have physical disabilities but have no intellectual disability at all. It includes autism, Down Syndrome, and a host of other kinds of neurological disorders and genetic disorders.
Thank you. Brendan, I know right now, you said the entrance would, had a rating of, I think, A and B, depending whether it was ingress or egress. Can you just give us a, a sense of the wait times or the anticipated issues in the peak hours for left turn, left turners on three-seventy-six?
The study showed that an average delay for left turners on three-seventy-six coming into the facility is less than ten-second average delay. So, okay, that, you know, that's, all of these delays, when I tell you, even the estimated number of cars, I mean, they are on average. You can, I mean, you can always have variation from them, but that's, you know, the way the software works and the analysis works is you're, you're developing an average, and that would, that would be the average delay, a high level of service. The number of cars actually making those movements are- you know, they're, they're small. They're, you know, in, in the teens at the most. They don't rise to the level of looking to get an auxiliary lane.
I was just going to ask, what would be the trigger for the auxiliary lane? Is it the, is it the weight or the volume of cars that would be turning? Or what's the typical trigger?
It could be a combination of both. But, you know, you need, you need significant through traffic in order so that there's enough of a delay. But you'd also need a number of cars. If there was only, you know, three cars making that movement, you would never put a, an auxiliary lane in. But if there was a significant number of cars making the movement and significant delays because of the, the conflicting traffic, then it could potentially warrant an auxiliary lane.
Okay. And I don't know if this is a question for you or for Jeff, but do you have the, so a driver coming up on someone waiting to turn, I, I know it's a couple hundred feet, but do you have a sense of what the sight distance would be for the driver?
Yes. They, they did, they did analyze the sight distance. There's actually, you know, even for the 45 mile an hour, 85th percentile speed, which is, which is what we've estimated for this segment of the road. They have sight distance that exceeds the requirements for that.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I can't tell you specifically, but I know it was, I think it was even greater than.
So a driver coming upon someone waiting to turn left has significant sight distance? So even if they were traveling 45 miles an hour, they'll see that car and have time to stop?
And, you know.
And again, I know nothing guarantees us that we don't have accidents, but this, this isn't a, there's not a turn here that's preventing anyone from seeing them or coming upon a left turner suddenly?
And sometimes, I mean, you know, there, there's lots of trade-offs in, in, in these types of situations. But sometimes, you know, additional driveways or, or cars that are making turns will help to actually slow traffic a little bit. You know, when you're, when you're in a more congested area where there's more friction on the sides of the road with driveways and cars turning, generally speeds are going to be lower. So, you know, although there's more traffic, it, it may have, you know, some calming effect, residual calming effect from that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brendan. The next name on our list? John?
Good evening, and thank you in advance for your time. I come here this evening as a town resident and someone that was born and raised in this area. And through my career and business member of, of the local community, became involved as a, as a volunteer on the Board of Directors for Abilities First. And I thought that it was, was important to have on the record the type of stewardship that this organization has provided for, for parts of more than five decades here in, in Dutchess County. As a, as a board volunteer, who then became the, the chairman of the board, the professionals that work at the organization have, there are people there, actually, there are people here in this room this evening that have put in close to 30 years of their professional career, serving people with developmental disabilities, from, from preschool students that participate in their programs, as well as to people that are adults, and even closing in on being senior citizens that, that need services that are professionally and with great dignity provided to our neighbors here in, in Dutchess County that were maybe not as, as fortunate as some of the people that have preceded me to the, to the podium that, that have had developmental disabilities or that, that, that have them. And I, I will just say that during my six years on the, on the Board of Directors, where other business leaders served, people that are in senior management positions of organizations like Central Hudson, Vastar Brothers Medical Center, IBM, so on and so forth, organizations that are very vested in this, in this community and, and even in, in this town, that any time that a, let's say, a group home went into a neighborhood, a home that, that would have the 24-hour service that was, that was referenced earlier, maybe in some cases by more than one staff member, I'll, I'll say that, you know, as, as reports came or as board members, we attended meetings, nobody ever stood up and said, wow, we are so happy and excited that a, that a group home for people with developmental disabilities is going to be close to my home. Never happened. But I do know from my own personal experience, from talking to people, that later became advocates of the organization, what strong neighbors Abilities First became to people that at this point in time in the process were not in favor of them becoming their neighbors because of the, the stewardship, the care, the dignity that they have for people with developmental disabilities. And equally as important, those that, that don't have those disabilities but have the opportunity to interact with, with their new neighbors. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry, I was late at another meeting. And as I came in through the door, there were big thunder clouds and lightning just to our west. So, that might have been a storm we just had.
We're glad you made it here safely.
Yeah, my name is Al Marata. I live on Zerna Boulevard, have for the last 41 years. I'm very happy to see this development. I was at the meetings in the fall when the other location was deemed not to be appropriate and that this was deemed most likely the best location in town. And I think it's a project which will be a big benefit to our town. I have a son who's developmental disabled who lives in a, a group home up in Red Hawk. And I'd like to ditto the words that Mr. Morgan just spoke. In my experience, whenever a group home has opened, they've been good neighbors in every instance that I know of, whether it's Slough Range, Poughkeepsie, Wapins, wherever. So, one question about sidewalks. I think I lived in town probably 15 or 16 years without any sidewalks at Hopewell Junction. Now, of course, we have sidewalks on both sides of Route 82 from Trinker Lane all the way to Frankie Superratt. So that can happen. So, the distance we're talking about here is not that far. So I would hope that state DOT can, can help us out with the sidewalk, even if we don't build this development, but certainly if we do. So I give my full support to this. Thanks.
Thank you. That's it. Before we close the public comment here, is there anybody else who'd like to offer comment this evening for the muse? Sure, you can come back up.
You know, I noticed about the sidewalk and seemed the town is willing to take the cost, and that's not fair. What I say, if this government has to go in, in the safe way, my suggestion as a professional, supposed to be four lanes, two, in two lanes in each direction. And you have to construct a walkway bridge to cross between the 376, and we need a sidewalk, sidewalk both side from 82 to 52. And we're not going to accept concrete sidewalk. Supposed to be, the way the town is going to look, the way is Hopewell Junction is supposed to have granite, granite curb with gravelstone sidewalk. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment this evening? Do you want to come up? Oh, okay. We just need you to sign in for us and then give your name when you come up to the podium for us.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tina Gu. I live on Creek Side Road. I have two kids going to Gayhead School. So I'm the most concerned about, in fact, to the school because as we all know, Gayhead is already very, very big. The biggest in district with 800 kids. And Vanwork is even more crowded. They just made a change. They had to move sixth, sixth grade to elementary school. So with this development, I don't know how many kids, 88 units, let's say 200 kids going to Gayhead and Vanwork. Is the town ready to increase our property tax to fund the school to, to become bigger?
We asked for the school district to provide us with comment. We did give the school district the estimate of children that would be living in this development based on the units, the number of bedrooms in each unit. This has a very high concentration of one-bedroom units. And I think, I mean, I believe the low range was 20 and the high range was 40 students? Correct. Okay. So, so I'm, there wouldn't be 200 children that would be able to live here. There wouldn't be enough bedrooms, but there would potentially be between 20 and 40 school-age children. So between grades, kindergarten through 12th grade. We wouldn't know what the specific breakout of the grade levels would be, obviously, but that gives you a sense of the number of children that may, may live there. We have asked the school district to provide us with feedback, and if they asked us for something like that, we would be able to, be able to respond to it and, and identify what the, what the need might be or what the appropriate mitigation would be. And we have made several attempts to contact the school district. We continue to hope that the school district will, will respond to us. And we're willing to, you know, I think, I'm not sure if the gentleman is still here, but somebody earlier said he was willing to try to help us make those contacts. We're, we're doing the best we can to get that information from the school district.
So where do we get the number of 20 to 40 from? Because we have 88 units. Are we limiting when people applying for those houses? Are we saying only two families can have one kid?
No, well, 22 units if they're developmentally disabled, then there's a, a number that's for senior citizens. And there's a nationally accepted standard from planners and school districts that comes up with the calculation. It's the same calculation that was used for the Hopewell Glen subdivision. And this development produces less potential number of children than the balance of that development when it's built out. So all of those statistics are used by the school district because we must be aware that each year there's a new kindergarten class, and they have a continuing rolling census within the schools. So the numbers aren't directly related to this project's going to do X or Y. And that, the, the New York State Constitution provides the school district shall educate the children in the manner that the school district and school board sees fit. So the school board is the one that controls the educational dynamic of the community.
So the senior units are exclusive senior. Even their family with kids cannot live with, you know, a unit?
Well, they're one-bedroom apartments. All right. And there are limits, occupancy limits. Under the New York State Building Code, every building has to have certain number of square feet and bedroom count, et cetera, for the number of people. And apartments are regulated in the same.
And just to, to clarify, the, the number that Lori cited, the 20 to 40 school-age children to be generated, did not take into consideration the, the Abilities First units nor the senior housing units? It calculated the number based on the total number of units in order to generate a worst-case scenario?
All right. That's my question.
Thank you.
Was that 20 to 40?
20 to 40.
Between 20 and 40?
Between 20 and 40. That's the national standard that's used, the process.
We just need to make sure you sign in and then, okay, great. And then if you could give us your name as he comes.
My name is Tracy Skarduzian. I'm a resident of East Fischell. And two gentlemen just now mentioned the community not wanting people with disability or elderly living here. And I don't think that's the issue. We don't have anything as a community against people with disabilities or the elder, that they're old. That's not the problem. The problem is the impact it's going to have on our schools, the impact it's going to have on transportation. I live in Hillside Lake. I have company. My company parks on the road. They have nowhere else to park. So I do know that that's an issue. If I have a Girl Scout event, my parents have to pick up. I may have four, five, six cars in front of my house. And I live on North Mission Road, very highly trafficked, not safe, but that's where they have to pick up their kids. This time of year, getting from one side of Brandy Lane to Robinson Lane can take anywhere between 20 and 30 minutes. It should not take that long. So if I have to get my daughter from Hillside Lake to Betty Jean's, I have to leave 30 minutes to 45 minutes to get there. So the bigger concern, I think, for the community is the amount of cars that we have. We have several toll brother communities here now that are adding to our traffic. We also have a community that doesn't know how to use sidewalks. We also have a community that doesn't know how to use crosswalks. I just chaffed on a trip for John Jay for the music department of 180 students to Boston. They do not know how to cross the street in a timely manner. You know why? John Jay does not have a sign. They cross that road whenever they want, expecting traffic to stop. They don't do that in Boston. You cross, that light turns green, your butt better be out of the way. So the entire time, I was screaming at children who don't know how to cross streets because that's not the community we live in. So I don't think the issue is that we don't want elderly. I don't think the issue is that we don't want places that are safe for, for our handicap. It's our congestion in our town from the time I moved in in 96 to today is horrendous. So I think that's our bigger issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One more call?
You can certainly come up shortly.
By the way, I remember when Hopewell had no traffic lights and the Grand Union was smaller than CVS. So yes, Hopewell has grown. How will we know when they need to build into the land banks for additional parking, just out of curiosity? And, you know, we keep coming back to the concept of the sidewalks, transportation, et cetera. Not opposed to the handicap, which, you know, I have a very handicapped child. I use Abilities First Services. I'm not opposed to it, but my other concern is a lot of these people are going to be a walking community, pretty much starting from the beginning of April until November. You have activities almost every single weekend on this side of the road. How are you going to get people from here to there? Because if you honestly think you're going to keep them in there when you've got carnival lights over here, that's not going to happen. And almost every single weekend, because I did look at the town calendar, you have a function starting in April all the way into November. You have community days. You have the Italian Center, the Fireman's Carnival. You have something with animals coming up, Safe Haven, I believe. And then I do have another question when I was looking at this. The majority of people with kids are going to be in the townhouses, and the majority of singles are going to be in the buildings. So I'm kind of questioning why a very tiny playground is where the singles are, not where the bulk of parents and families are going to be? Because as a parent, I would probably not use that because I would want my child near me. And my other question is, what kind of safety are we going to put in for the playground? Because when you look at it, and I never realized till they put it up on the other one, how close it is to an access road to the sewer system? Just curiosity.
Okay. Jeff, do you want to address that for us?
There's a community room in the multifamily building here. And that community room actually has a terrace out back, an area for picnicking. And the small play area that we've provided is really just to function with that community space in a way that Ken feels in the past he's seen the community used. There's certainly ample, there's almost equal play area of this small field that exists, one, two, three of them along there where you could play. Kids are going to play where they're going to play. One of the things we did in response to the board's comments was really open up this green area. Obviously, if anyone wants to play active sports, they're going to go across the street. In terms of buffering, I do believe we show a fence and there is a row of pines and, you know, the, the idea of the fence would, you know, hopefully provide warning that that's an odd area you should go in. But obviously, we can't control everyone everywhere.
Okay. Scott, do we have that road posted right now? Do you, do you know offhand?
Which road is that?
The access road to the, sorry?
It's gated into the sewer.
There's not a.
I'm with you, but that's at the mouth of the road, not necessarily back where the play area would be and kids looking at the road. I just wondered whether the road, the road was posted or what.
No, there's a sign that indicates it's for the sewer plant. There is a gate at the entrance that's locked during non, you know, when the operator's not there, the gate's locked.
Okay.
Don't have a lot of people who want to hang out at the sewer plant?
No.
Jeff, let's just make sure there's appropriate screening and that the fence goes around. Jeff, let's just make sure there's appropriate screening and that the fence goes around. Thank you.
Eric just put it up there. You know, there is a fence proposed along here. And this is the driveway. You know, I've, I've been in there a number of times. I, I think the operator probably comes in and out of there every few hours. You have one, one vehicle that may make, you know, their way around this one-way loop. It's a driveway. I mean, there's not like a, and again, we have provided fencing back into the tree line and the idea to open it up.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Nina, I know we're still waiting on a few things for the EAF, but I don't think any of those would affect the site plan itself.
That's correct.
Okay. Brendan, anything on your end that would affect the site plan that we're waiting on?
I think the only, the only thing that we're continuing to coordinate with the DOT would be, you know, pedestrian accommodations to cross 376.
Tom, that, we usually don't finish the discussions with the DOT until we're in at least a preliminary...
Well, that's a condition of approval usually is the DOT permit. May I just address the comment about the land bank?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
The park, parking bank.
Why did you miss that? I'm sorry.
We have an agreement that's execute, which you see all these comments, if and when an approval is given to a project, there's then a whole raft of other approvals and agreements that are entered into. And one of them would be with the land bank parking is the trigger there is that the town's directive, the owner of the property has to open it and build it. They also have the right to do it of their own volition with our consent.
My question was...
Well, we monitor it. Obviously, if there's a situation where people are having a company and there's too many cars there and they can't use the town parking lot or the firehouse lot on the weekend and they are parking on the street, then obviously there's several things that could happen. Just like in our residential streets, non-state roads, the town board puts up no parking signs when there's a continual problem for a neighbor or neighborhood. I know often I have company on a holiday day park in the street, obviously, if it's done courteously, et cetera. I understand this is a different problem. So that the parking's regulated by the town. If we see that there are issues here, no parking zones could be created along 376, which then invokes the authority to police to have cars towed and removed. And obviously, with the, the agreement that we have, it would trigger the developer or owner of the property's obligation to build the rest of those parking spaces. So there's a lot of different things that could come into play there.
Thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Sure.
You know, you keep mentioning the Thanksgiving on, you know, three bedroom apartment, the capacity is six people. If there's six in this apartment, they have six cars. They have two space. What's the other four is going to go? They're going to be in the street. I'm not talking about...
There were no, the leases of these, and one of the conditions of the covenants that's recorded is that there'll be a limit on the number of occupants in each apartment. So it's not just like, you know, I rent the apartment, I have six people to live with me.
No, no, I know, I know it's the three bedroom, you allow six.
Mm-hmm.
And if the six has cars...
Right.
You have two spaces. So you left with four.
But then you have the land bank.
When are you going to have the land bank? After when? They're going to be parking the street, you're going to create problems, and then you're going to find all the land banks. Let's get, take a while. That should be done now. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I think I, Brendan, you had nothing...
Yeah.
Christian, I know you still have some things that you're working out with the storm water, but anything that you feel would significantly impact the site plan at this point?
As long as there's a, there's an approval from the DOT for the stormwater practice in the right of way, and as long as the, the water calcs come back, that they do have capacity and there's no need for, you know, storage or an additional facility on site, which we don't anticipate, there's, there's nothing...
And those typically the water and the DOT permits are conditions.
They're all in the next phase.
Scott, anything from your perspective as far as the municipal water and...
No, I think we've covered it.
Okay. All right. Any issues or comments from board members that we want to discuss? I'm, I'm inclined to, and Tom, we can talk a little bit about timing for decision and things like that, but I know that we have someone who's going to make an effort to try to get a response from the school district. I'm considering closing the public hearing, but leaving a comment period open, say till the end of this week, to hopefully get in the rest of the comments that we're expecting.
Well, actually, if it's the comment from the school district, they're an interested, you recognize them as an interested agency. So those comments can come into the record at any time. It doesn't have to be part of the public comment here.
Oh, okay. I guess I, I didn't realize that.
As involved or interested, so.
Okay. So unless anyone has any objection, do I have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess Jeff or Mr. Harley, let's talk about scheduling as far as decisions. Bear with me while I grab our agendas. Tom, I know there's a lot here that we need to review.
Well, we, we were, because of the timeliness issue that we have with litigation, we were looking that, suggesting that you put it on for your June 2nd meeting.
Okay.
As a tentative date for consideration, and then we can go from there if needed.
Okay. So you, that, you feel that gives us sufficient time to pull everything together?
Mm-hmm.
Are, are you able to be here for that meeting?
I will most definitely be here.
Okay. All right. So do I have a motion to put the Muse 89 units on 376 on for decision on our June 2nd agenda?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The professionals will be in touch with you if there's conditions and things like that they need to discuss with you, and then you'll be back on for decision on June 2nd.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
All right. I just want to thank the members of the public again. I know it's, it's difficult to come out here. These are long meetings. We really do appreciate your input. It does help our, our process and hearing questions and, and understanding the answers to them is very beneficial to us. As Mr. Wood mentioned, we'll be able to accept the school district comments. Hopefully, we'll have those school district comments in the next few days. All right. Thank you, folks. The next, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Okay. The next item, sorry, go ahead.
When you come to the planning office to see the plans, ask Pam to get you lunch. See how that goes.
See how that goes.
What? Christian, thank you. We'll just give him, wait for a moment for everyone to...
I can start the next item.
Item two, the applicant is asked to adjourn to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
His wife is clearly in distress.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to hear that. Okay. So, so we'll move Beekman Golf Course, the discussion, we'll move that over to our June 2nd agenda as well?
Yes.
All right.
Lori, I have a question for you. They're quite elderly and they have problems sitting for long times. Would it be possible to make them the first item?
Yeah, I would think that would be a great thing. They, they did look in...
I wanted to hear the resolution from you. They heard all of this tonight.
Yeah, they could stand. No, but they, they did seem in distress.
Yeah, they, they were. I helped...
Well, she's just gone from wheelchair to the walker. Right. Starting approval, it is...
I think that would be a nice consideration.
We'll absolutely accommodate them. They waited a very long time this evening. We'll put them on first on our agenda as a one-time exception. Normally, we put our discussions on last.
Scott suggested to him in case he wanted...
That's not a problem. No, thank you. And, and thank you for recognizing that sometimes when we're in the midst of things, we don't see that. Okay, so the next item on our agenda, do we have Foster Road professional, Micali parking request here?
Oh, he's getting his forms.
Oh, okay. All right. So one more minute and then we'll, we'll get started with the last item on our agenda. Thank you for waiting.
I just wanted to get...
We just got, I'm sorry, we're not picking up your voice.
Not a problem. Alfred Capelli architect for Dr. Sinha, Foster Road professional. I just wanted to wait it out because we want to get to the next...
That's fine.
Okay?
We appreciate your patience.
No problem. So let's, let's recap here. We were here maybe six, seven months ago. Several issues down at Foster Road.
Right.
Real or imagined? We told you we'd be back. There were some negotiations for the adjacent piece of property.
Okay.
Known as the Micali parcel. Those negotiations have pretty much been finalized. And what we have in this initial sketch is an attempt to expand the parking onto the Micali parcel, keeping the house, keeping the swimming pool and some of the sheds. We put, you know, we explained that in the narrative. Mrs. Micali, the elder, wants to live there. That's part of the deal here. She does not want to give up the memories of those surroundings. She doesn't use the swimming pool, she doesn't, but be that as a may, she doesn't want anything disturbed, which limits us to the parking that we can add.
Okay.
So this is what I call phase one. So we're here knowing that there are issues with, ultimately with drainage, with lighting, with landscaping, things of those natures. But if you don't buy into this, we're not going to waste our time, obviously, doing that. So seeing what we're doing here, you know, we're looking to see what the flavor of the board is. Also, keeping in mind that this thing may progress from year to year depending upon Mrs. Micali. Tomorrow, she may...
I understood what you meant when you said phase one.
Phase one, yes. And, and one of the things we wanted to talk about, I mentioned to Joe, is if I come back next year or two years from now, you know, this segmentation issue here. Because again, she could wake up next, next week and say, knock down the swimming pool after we've done phase one and, and we're expanding it. And ultimately, I think the intent is, is probably to raise the house, you know, when, when, when Mrs. Micali passes on.
Do you have a, do you have a, I'll call it a conceptual plan that you could provide that would just show if it was, if it was just going to be solely the commercial use and the residential use wasn't there, what the parking would look like? And then show us what it would look like now? Because then you have sort of a roadmap for where you would be going.
Absolutely, I do.
If you do want to make a change.
Yes, actually, right, I had a one, two, three, I mean, we didn't present it, we'd simplify it first, but I had like a...
That's fine.
...phase one, phase two, phase three type of thing. I don't have it with me this evening.
But I, but I think you cover segmentation if you say, you know...
That's fine.
That would cure the segmentation.
Sure, not a problem. We can show you ultimately what this site may or may not be.
Hey, Al.
Yes.
One of the questions, I mean, we read this really carefully. Are you actually buying the lot?
Yes.
Or is it, you are buying?
Yes, yes, yeah, he's going to buy it and he's going to let her live there.
Indebitably, or it wasn't clear whether it was one of these arrangements where...
Like a life estate.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's being bought subject to, of course, getting, getting through you guys here. But I think ultimately...
So it will be a purchase upfront?
I, I think it's going to be a purchase upfront, I believe. I'm looking at an attorney over here, but I don't...
That's the way life estate works.
Yeah.
Is that the person would buy the property and the person who owned it continues the rights of possession of either all the parcel or part of it. So in this case, she'll keep possession of part of it.
Okay. So, and that, that goes into effect immediately because it wasn't clear whether it started with an easement and with arrangements to buy down the road.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be, there was some discussion about easements and, you know, give me a description of this and that.
No easements?
Yes, I don't want to, I don't want to do that. That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
And Tom, just a quick question. On those situations, no one else comes behind her? That, that situation ends when she...
Depends on the terms of the...
Yeah, that's right. Depends on how it's structured, but...
Depend, okay, the intent would be...
The purest, simplest one is that when she voluntarily gives up her possessive authority and trish reward passes, it's...
Right, okay. Yeah, that's what I just, so there, so there is an end date at some point.
Correct.
As opposed to, I'll say, a permanent residential component of the site.
So we're looking to ease the, the burden of the parking that we all know is there. Okay, we acknowledge that. We do make mention about the possibility of legalizing the second floor of building number two, which, which we only use part of it now. We know there are issues perhaps with the health department, et cetera, et cetera. But again, we want...
And so it's driven by the park.
So the parking, I can, if, if I'm allowed to add the parking and I decide not to expand upstairs, I don't have to deal with the health department at all. Okay? Only should I, you know, ask you guys and pursue it further by, 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 by expanding that use, do I have to deal with the health department? Does that make sense?
Are we talking about rezoning? In, in event that the house is razed and the rest of that, would we just rezone the lot and make it...
No, it's, it's zone commercial now.
It's not, it's not residential.
I thought it had a residential push.
Yes, in the, in the rear.
As, as with much of Route 82, only the first several hundred feet are commercial.
And the rear, just like in Dr. Sinha's parcel, the rear is zone residential.
Right, so it, my question again.
Yes. I'm, I'm not going to expand, I'm not going to ask any...
It's all in a commercial.
Yes.
You're not going to ask for...
I'm not asking for rezoning for that.
Does that make sense? Because in consideration of this, we are all sitting there saying, you know, where's the residential line?
It makes sense if you're not, if you're not going to be doing anything residential, but it doesn't really matter. We have a petition that you recommended to the town board to go ahead on for a little further down on 82.
Right, Dr. Vig.
Dr. Vig, to make the, the whole debt commercial.
Right, right.
So it depends upon how you want to use your property.
I wasn't, I'm not asking to do that.
May I ask a question?
I'm sorry?
This is, yes, may I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Okay. One of the, the catch things on reverse mortgages is as long as you occupy the house, you may stay there, but if somebody wants to going to a nursing home or leaving the house, they lose it. Has she agreed that, does she understand?
It's not a reverse mortgage.
This isn't a reverse mortgage.
No, I know it's not, but the question is, is it the same kind of thing? If she leaves the house to go live with someone else or in a nursing facility, then do you get to like dismantle the house?
It would depend on the terms of the agreement that they breached.
It's...
That's what I'm asking is what... Sure. And I, and I don't know if I know them intimately enough. I know that they haggled back and forth for many, many, many months about, about things like that. So I don't know those intimate terms.
Where I am in life, I know a lot of old people.
Sure.
They have possessions, houses, property, and they would like to see it as long as they live. They'd like to sometime take a drive there and see it.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I'm asking if, if she understands the conditions that you're putting on exactly. That means if she leaves, you can demolish the house, or it's only if she dies?
Yes, now, my, now, right. And mind you, we're not dealing with, with little Miss Micali.[1624.37] Yes. Now, mind, now, right. And mind you, we're not dealing with Little Miss Misselli. We're dealing with the six children there, is who we're dealing with, the sons and the daughters, and that's...
And I don't think it's really for us in a public forum to discuss the private issue. Rest assured that if he's representing that it's a life estate such, we'll make sure it is. But I don't think we should really go into too many details.
Okay. I just, in my position in life, I know lots of people, and I worry about people, you know, not getting what they thought they were getting.
Sure.
If he's not...
Was a certain unhappy neighbor? Is he placated in this arrangement?
Probably not. I don't know if he'll ever be placated.
All right.
Okay. So, you know, we'll see him at some point in time, I'm sure.
I just want to say, if he's not contract-bending purchaser for that other lot, then you would, you would need Misselli to be part of the application, if they're not already, at the point where you're, I know this is sketch plan discussion, but...
Yes. Okay.
They need to be party to it unless he is contract-bending, and then he can, he can apply, I think, on behalf of the property owner.
That's fine. Not a problem when we make the formal application.
Yeah.
A few other points I'd like to make. There's discussion about dissolving the property lines between the two parcels, which is not, not a problem. That's going to happen. Okay? I'd like to say, as a caveat to that, I've had some discussion with the DOT.
Okay.
And I guess it depends upon how and where and when we do this. If I'm a corner lot, Sinha and Misselli, the DOT may not grant me another access way onto Route 82.
Okay.
Okay? Which may or may not be good planning, having everyone funnel out onto Foster Road. I'm just bringing that to everybody's attention. So I don't know how we're going to play this yet. I want, I'd like a limited-term movement, perhaps, off of 82.
I'd like you to work with Brendan as you go to the DOT, and let Brendan kind of assist you with some of those conversations.
Not, not a problem.
I think the big issue there would be to provide a concept plan.
Sure.
And if you could do that, then we could, you know, demonstrate what type of access.
That's fine. Because I think, you know, I'd like, again, perhaps even limited, right-in, right-out type of thing. It only makes sense not to...
Or maybe you keep it two lots, but have one site plan, and then DOT, I think, would take the position as two lots.
Right. But I think as a byproduct of site plan approval, you may want that lot line wiped out. I don't know. If you say, yeah, I'll keep it as two lots, then I'll keep it as perhaps two lots, if that serves what we're looking to do here.
Regardless of what would happen, you would still need sufficient parking for what you have there right now. And that's, that's the key, is that I think you're getting there. You're making progress towards that.
Well, again, just to clarify, Lori, we have enough parking for our site at the time we got site plan approval 10 years ago. We don't have it for today's zoning. And with this parking addition, we'll have more than satisfactory amount to meet today's zoning ordinance today. Okay, so is there anything out of the ordinary that prevents me from preparing? Again, I'll do that phasing and starting to work and make a complete application for the board.
And forgive me if you already talked about this, but did you talk about the use of the second story in the building? Because I thought I read something in your submission about...
Yes. Yes, okay. So we have the second story of Building Two, the one in the rear, the one that Dr. Sinha partially uses now for his office and one or two clerical offices. And then he was putting, remember, he was putting a couple of telephone people upstairs? And I think...
And I think what was supposed to be there was a lunchroom and no permanent space.
A lunchroom.
Is that, do I have that?
A lunchroom, a conference area. That's correct.
Right.
And Dr. Sinha has his office upstairs, which may or may not be according to the original approval. So he's still up there. But I think part of the issue was when we were here six or seven months ago, was the fact that he took, he finished part of the attic that was totally...
You were expanding use, that wasn't part of your...
Right. And again, he puts some sec, okay, so we're out of there completely.
Okay.
And again, it may trigger the health department.
But where I'm going with this is, what I, what I want you to do is, if he wants to occupy that space, and he wants to...
Put it well in the application.
And he wants to restore it, it looks like you're going to have sufficient parking now. You're going to be able to potentially request that. So I'd just like to make sure that whatever he intends to do with the buildings, whatever occupancy he wants to have, please include that in the current application.
That's fine. But I may not be able to meet the burden of the health department, though. But when we get to that point, we'll get to that point. That's fine.
If that's what he's trying to do, and that's a hurdle you can jump, then I want to make sure that your site plan and your usage of the site matches.
Reflects that.
Right.
Okay. And when I do make that application, and my second floor is used for clerical purposes only as an accessory use of the medical downstairs, am I basing the parking based on medical usage, or am I basing it on office usage, if it's non-medical related?
I'm going to defer to Michelle on that. If I could have you just reach out to Michelle and confirm that with her.
That's fine. We'll do that. Okay.
But I know I speak for the board when I say, it's nice that he is trying to get into compliance.
Yes. We do appreciate that.
Well, as much as people think that he tries, he tries. Okay, so I have nothing else, if there's any other questions?
There was one other comment that Michelle had noted on her sketch plan memo. When you do your potential full build-out scenario, I guess that would be Phase Three presumably, all the parking would need to be located on the commercial portion of the lot and not on the residential portion of the lot.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
What's on the adjacent lot, which would be, I guess, to the south?
The one to the right? Okay. That's, isn't that the car guy, what's-his-name's auto that he just sold?
Ben's.
Ben's Auto, I think.
Oh, the next one over.
Yeah, the next one over here is Ben's Auto, I think.
I just didn't know if there was a residential use, that was just going to be next to that proposed parking that we need to screen or consider, or if it's all commercial.
Yeah, this is Ben's Auto right here.
It's now discounted, maybe it's discounted by...
I think so. Yeah, I think it just recently, yeah, so that's...
That's probably paved in the back end here. Yeah, that would be a compliment.
Okay, we're all set?
We're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have a, I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
I was going to say, wow, guys, really? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.